معذور معذور يلي بالجرح تعيش معذور إذا فيك جرحك عاش معذور يلي بالجرح تعيش معذور إذا فيك جرحك عاش إن سدما من ما تبكيش إن سد وإن كان مو جدما ما يوفاش إن صدّم وعيش فجر يامك انت حلم وجنيت ثمرة حلامك إن صدّم وعيش فجر يامك انت حلم وجنيت ثمرة حلامك وإذا بشر مسك بظرك تذكر وما تيساش إذا بشر مسك بظرك تذكر وما تيساش سيد البشر لما انظلم سامح عفا سيد البشر لما انظلم سامح عفا وبالشري ما كافاش وبالشري ما كافاش
أنا عن نفسي قلت لكم أنني متبة حتى حد ومحاشتي بشن حاسب حتى حد فقط أنا أريد تكشف الحقيقة
حقك بالكرامة نداست حقك علينا تش فوق الراس حقك بالكرامة نداست حقك علينا تش فوق الراس واللي ظلم لما حجب زعمى ضمير وسحاش يحس الندم ويعتذر ويطلب سماه واللي ظلم لما حجب زعمى ضمير وسحاش يحس الندم ويعتذر ويطلب سماه يلي بالجرح عاش معذور يلي بالجرح تعيش معذور إذا فيك جرحك عاش معذور يلي بالجرح تعيش معذور إذا فيك جرحك عاش تونس بعزَّة جادها عزَّة لكل أولادها تونس بعزَّة جادها عزَّة لكل أولادها هذا الوطن يهلا تحدي الضيم هذا الوطن حضو عليه نحميم هذا الوطن يهلا تحدي الضيم هذا الوطن حضو عليه نحميم فاحضان هنترحون صافي الزمن هنتصالحون فاحضان هنترحون صافي الزمن هنتصالحون
أنا جيت له نايل بشي اللي صار عليه متعودش على بنتي متعودش على بنيات التوازه ولاد التواز تواز
الـ جوج تونيسian الـ جوج تونيسian سووا اپرتو Bienvenue à la cinquième réunion d'audition de l'IBD par laquelle nous commençons par l'île nationale
يا حماة الحماة هلمو هلمو يبل يسلب وبل صاره بلوبي ببل نموط نموط وياك يلواك إذا بالسماء وطير عقتها إذا بالسواه كبير عقدها إذا السدو السنا مجنها يزال بيد وشوفها فلا عاشة في بسم خانها ولا عاشة من ليس من جربها نموط نموط وياك يلواك حياة الكرام ونفط العيون يا حماة الحماة هلمو هلمو يبل يسلب وبل صاره بلوبي ببل نموط نموط وياك يلواك ولا السواه بين المبع سدو سدو كهذا الدنيا سواه كياك السوهم عقدها دواه به ودواه دينه وفيها كلا جنونا والهبة وفيها ظلام بيل لملة وفيها بعاد يجو مسلق وفيها لبل سلمونا السماه يا حماة الحماة هلمو هلمو يبل يسلب وبل صاره بلوبي ببل نموط نموط وياك يلواك إذا الشعب يلواك ظلاد الحيا فلا هدّة لينجذبها ولا هدّة لينجذبها ولا هدّة لينجذبها يا حماة الحماة هلمو هلمو يبل يسلب وبل صاره بلوبي ببل نموط نموط وياك يلواك
نستمع الآن إلى كلمة هيئة الحقيقة والكرامة تحيي للجميع نحيي اليوم الذكرة الساديسة لثورةنا المجيدة اليوم سنستمع إلى من قام بهذه الثورة من شبابنا ومن ذحى لذلك وستسمعون الأصوات والمعانات أيضا سنستمع اليوم إلى أرملة القابي الفاضل المرحوم مختار يحيوي التي ستحكي على موضوع توفي في القضاء وأيضا سنستمع إلى شهادات حول التجنود القصير منذ أن قامت الهيئة الكرامة بهذه الجلسات البسيمة العالمية
سمعنا nous avons entendu beaucoup de choses au sujet donc des critiques qui disent que en fait le fait de déclarer la vérité cela ne peut apporter que des problèmes nous disons que cela est en fait consacré par la constitution et la loi le droit à la vérité c'est également l'objet d'accords et de conventions et il y a même une journée internationale du droit à la vérité pourquoi la communauté internationale et la Tunisie ont déterminé accepter ce droit c'est parce que le peuple doit être responsable s'il est capable de pouvoir pratiquer son droit à la liberté et ceux qui ont le pouvoir de décision doivent également étaler la vérité pour le peuple tant que le peuple connaît la vérité le peuple ne peut qu'être participer dans ces informations et sera d'autant plus responsable et partenaire de la démocratie qui permet au peuple de participer à la gestion du pays et lorsqu'on demande à notre peuple de se sacrifier il saura très bien pourquoi le faire et il sera également capable de le faire mais lorsqu'on considère que la vérité n'est que l'appanage d'une petite communauté ou d'une minorité cela signifie en fait qu'on sous-estime le peuple et il s'agit également donc d'un manque de respect à l'égard du peuple nous disons que l'IBD va poursuivre ses efforts pour faire un éclairage sur la vérité même si certains ne veulent pas que cette vérité soit connue nous disons que la vérité participe à l'unité nationale et on ne peut pas construire un peuple solidaire sans donner le droit au peuple de connaître la vérité merci nous vous demandons de ne pas prendre de photos ni d'applaudir s'il vous plaît merci
The first case we will listen to is the testimony of an injured of the revolution Muslim Qazdallah and Mrs Alab Nijma would introduce Muslim
A revolution is a people's act par excellence the work of intellectuals and unionists and activists have joined over centuries until reaching the date of 14th of January 2011 the youth have been an important and active players in this act and this revolution that would have an important impact on their future some sacrificed themselves and died for this act giving their lives for this country while others dreams and education and excellence have been aborted while others professional careers have been aborted and their dreams have been dissipated and some have been incapacitated and now they live handicapped or totally because of the participation of this revolution despite their active contribution and participation and contribute to what we enjoy today in terms of liberty and giving and building what is Tunisia today that enjoys liberty Tunisia that respects human rights we find them today withdrawn retreated they live as a burden on their families they're suffering and burdens are overwhelming Muslim Qazdallah is one of these young people who tried to defend the country they participated after the 14th of January the eve of the 15th of January with a young with some of the inhabitants of Werdanin he participated in protecting his community and property by coordinating with the military with the military and they were equipped only with sticks and stones and empty barrels but he was shot they were shot, some died and some were injured he was among those who were injured and his leg was amputated but his heart is still beating and his hopes are great so that they would be part of that and that they sacrificed would be fruitful and we consider that this is the best blessing and the best remedy to such sufferings and the sufferings of his family Muslim you have the floor please tell us your story
Thank you, today this opportunity is not always available to us I am Muhammed Ali, I was in Werdanin, I was injured at the events of Qais Ben Ali we with my neighborhood inhabitants we coordinated with the military and established a committee to keep guard and we were controlling the main avenue we were about 500 people invigilating around 9 o'clock at night we were controlling the city we were patrolling and then we received a phone call telling us that the entry that the control post, the previous one there were very few people and they said that there is a police car that did not want to stop and they said that the car is heading towards us that the police station was actually in the center of the town so they were not obliged to take that road and when they arrived there was a white car Renault Express and there was a police van and a Berlingo and a four-wheel-drive car, an SUV when they heard that this car was heading towards us the empty barrels and the bars they were used to block the road and we had yellow bands on our arms at that time when they arrived we have the martyr Muaz who as he's a taxi driver he moved to contact, to see the people but then he moved backward and he said that Qaisa Ben Ali is with them and when the youth they, when the youth knew the young people there they heard that Qaisa Ben Ali was there they just surrounded the car and they tried to contact the military and when the people started getting closer to the police car they did not really show the weapons to frighten us because people would actually, the first time people would see real weapons they would actually move backward but there were police police officers who were not wearing masks while others showed only their eyes they had the head of the police station in Werdanin and when he arrived he said you the people of Werdanin I've been very nice to you and they would not let us go but one of the people said the military would intervene but when they arrived they simply pulled their weapons and they shot the people and they shot at us Najha Sabar rest in peace he was filming using his phone and he had a flashlight when the police saw the filming he was shot in the head actually what we could find his brains on the wall later on but then when people actually, some people escaped some people hid behind a bus that was there then they shot at the bus and and this bus disappeared afterwards we didn't know and we don't know until now where this bus has been taken so even the marks of the bullets on the walls and the bus there, they were in the photographs when I was shot I felt like frozen I was very crispy and could not move when the police stepped out of the car and said they died they said let's go but actually what happened is that they had flat wheels so they proceeded slowly until they reached them second and there are some people from second in their witnesses and in their testimonies and the witnesses there they said that there was a shooting between the police and the military I was moved from my place, we had only one ambulance those who were seriously injured were taken first and then when somebody had a scarf and he took the scarf and wrapped my leg so I don't bleed then they put me on a truck and that night I had my father and my brother with me on the spot I was taken to the local hospital and they said they could do nothing because I had to be taken to Monastir Hospital and then I was taken in a van with my cousin and one of my neighbors who was driving the van and we were also shot and masjidaisa we don't know who shot at us when we reached Monastir they said that the surgery cannot be done in Monastir so I was, I had to be transferred to Sahliun Hospital in Seus then there was an ambulance but this ambulance, it was all the windows of the ambulance were broken I had a mattress in that ambulance with a blanket from 10:30 at night I arrived at the hospital at 4 o'clock in the morning I was, I had my surgery and I stayed in, comatose, stayed for three months and 15 days I had another operation in order to give more details four from Werdanin died and two from Sahliin and there were 13 injured people I had two operations and during that period we, with the first post-revolution government they said that the injured people would be treated at the military hospital when I arrived they did not accept my accept me, they saw that I was bleeding but then I was transferred to the Al Qasab Hospital Orthopedia Hospital and then I, my leg did not improve in total I had 32 surgeries myself and another one, Tarkiziri, we protested in front of the Constitutional Assembly we we threatened that we would set ourselves on fire because I had to choose between two things, amputation or finding a solution so we went and in front of the Constitutional Assembly they actually, they took us in an ambulance and they took us to the Ministry of Human Rights where they had the files of the injured and the martyrs we met with Mr Samir Dilu, then Minister of Justice and Human Rights we were admitted to a private hospital, Sainte-Auguste, until they would find a solution after then seven people we were transferred to Qatar they told us here that when you go to Qatar they will not stay there that is anyone whose surgery is required that would be transferred to France, to Germany depending on the nature of care needed there we did not find anything I'm not blaming the state that hosted us I'm blaming the government that sent us there and did not tell us the truth there besides massages we did not receive any other care I returned from Qatar, the airport, somebody took a photograph of my leg when I removed the bandage I, we saw, we saw my leg, I saw my leg it was rotten and there were worms the first time I could see worms in a living body until now I'm shocked because I have never seen this in my entire life we have martyrs in Werdanin the forensic doctor said that they were not shot can you see that anyone, that even the dead are not at peace in their tombs they were taken back from their tombs and they found that some received as many as three bullets sorry, the story is one but I included so many stories altogether but now the governments and the politicians who are calling us as drunkards and looters but I want to tell them that it's the looters and it is the drunkards maybe that made the revolution but they stole that revolution who stole this revolution, they are the thieves, Muhammed al-Hanshi for example he's, he has been in all the protests and his request was just to be treated everyone knows Muhammed al-Hanshi he often was in front of ministries with his sticks and he was calling just for one thing, to be saved until he died it was the will of Allah and until now many people don't know him his only request is to be treated and to live like everyone else and to reach his own dream, to realize his own dreams but he did not dream and he did not realize that dream but he died and left behind him men who believe in their cause and who would win this cause for him during his last days Mr Adl Amir, Secretary of State, I assume my responsibility in what I say they went to take, there to take a photograph when he was actually accelerating his last breaths stones would have been moved by that scene not people we are not suffering because of what we see from the governments what we actually fear most is what we are witnessing daily it is this pain, it is this horrible pain the simplest dream of these people is that they live a normal life, a respectable one they are the ones who made that revolution but they could not make use of it they could not use it to achieve their own hopes who achieved anything apart from telling what happened to you and they today are enjoying this freedom are insulting us and treating us as villains and as thieves this flag, we gave it more blood and that's for us more honest than for those who actually stole this revolution from us these people today if they have a brother or a relative or anyone from their family members or anyone from their family members, wouldn't they really defend them? But they don't know this. Do you know who knows this? It is our parents who really made all the sacrifices. It is the people who were with us all the time. True that you are shot, but they are the ones who suffered more. And until today, six years, six years of suffering, six years of injustice, six years of oppression. We, what we're asking from our country here is that the people who made the sacrifices, who gave their lives, who are martyrs against the rejection of anyone else, those who made the sacrifices, we have martyrs. And their demands or their requests is this. Today, I sometimes, I am in the streets. And when I find, I find the policeman who shot me there. Just imagine that feeling. The person who destroyed you, who stole your life. You, one lost one's health, but still you're proud that you took part in this revolution and that you gave something to this country. And this dignity is, this nose of mine, which is of glass. And if it is fallen, it is broken. And until now, I'm ready. I am ready to, to give all my body as a sacrifice. Be it that I give my other leg and I continue my life simply walking on no legs at all. But today, there are people who believe in this country, in this cause. There are people, free men and women, who are standing for that against all those politicians who are dividing the people. this country judged everything through the martyrs and the injured people. As long as the perpetrators have not been brought to justice, the objectives of the revolutions would not be complete. Those people should be brought to justice publicly. Today, the judiciary is, symbolically enough, is maybe telling you to pay the price of that bullet which shot you. It's my, our request is that we want justice. We want adequate treatment for those who made the sacrifices. We want to restore the dignity to those who lost it, to those mothers who wept tears of blood for their lost children, for their fallen children, for the sake of Tunisia. You have an opportunity, a golden opportunity to achieve those objectives of the revolution is that you bring to justice those who are the perpetrators. These people, maybe it's Tarkaziri, the Medical Commission. Adal Amri was given to them an aramai and he still had that bullet. That is, if this person would be brought to the aramai, he would simply lose his last breath then. Khalid bin Nijma, he said, he knows that he, he said, "I know that I will never find my legs again. I will never be able to walk again. But please help me alleviate the pain. I just want to sleep like people." For all those you have seen today and all those, these, all of them are listening to me, politician. These tears are not weakness or are not fear. This is simply being tore from the zen, that is, subjugated. It is true that I cannot name many people. But these people have faith in Allah and all the others, those who believe in their country and know the value of all the blood that has been made as a sacrifice. You can give me the billion, billions. I can give you billions. But just give me back my leg as it was. Or help Khalid walk again. Or either walk again. Or Khalid also to walk again. And then we will give you those billions. When will I be able to find peace again? When the martyr's mother or the injured's mother sees her own son relaxed, alleviated. And then when? It is when these people find their rights again and when these people would be brought to justice, a fair trial. You can say anything. You can make them thieves. But, but you can always say, yes, we have made the revolution and the revolution is ongoing. It started in 2011. It is the beginning. Now it's six years. And what is coming is better. We still have that spirit of the revolution and that which drove us into the streets outside. And we will continue the walk. Thank you, Muslim. Second testimony is by Khalid bin Nijma. Mrs. Hayat Vertani would introduce the second witness.
Muhammed Darwish, in one of his poems, he says, "Think about others when you sleep. There are those who couldn't even sleep. When you talk yourself, think about others and think of those who have won the right to speak." Khalid bin Nijma. Because he didn't think about himself and thought about others. When he tried to save a person who was shot in front of the hospital of Ras Ashbal, he was shot with three bullets. He didn't think about himself and that's why he is paralyzed today. Khalid today will give his testimony with his mother, who will talk about her sufferings Khalid, floor is yours. Thank you very much for giving me this opportunity to give my testimony in front of this audience and the media. Hayat, could you please take the floor? I am the mother of Khalid bin Nijma from Ras Ashbal. On January 13, my son went to the hospital to get kada. And he found himself in the midst of a demonstration. He was shot by the chief police officer. And he shot him once and twice. Please, could you let Khalid continue his story? I went to the hospital during the demonstration that was in front of the mosque. People were talking about Sidh wusid and what was happening there. And all around the country, the Imam asked people to remain quite uncalm. Then suddenly, there was a police car which shot tear gas to the people. The people were demonstrating peacefully, actually. And the people started to protest. They went in front of the police station. They were not throwing any stones or anything. And actually, the police were shooting tear gas to the people and they were also beating people. And there was a lot of tension and tension started to grow. And people started to throw stones at the policemen. We were trying to take the people who were shot by the police, to take them away. And we could see that some people were shot. There was a person, his name is Hamdi Dawis, who was shot by a bullet. And actually, it was shot in his belly. I tried to move forward in order to rescue him. But the chief police officer shot me and I was first shot in the chest. Actually, I couldn't feel much. There was like something which penetrated my body, but I never had any experience of bullets. And then he shot me once again in the back and I simply lost consciousness. The problem was that those people who were trying to rescue me were shot by the police. And there was a lot of violence, actually. Then I was taken to the hospital of Ras Ashbal in an ambulance to go to the hospital of Bizat. My situation worsened, actually. I spent nine days in the hospital of Bizat. I didn't get adequate care in the hospital. They did not really take good care of us because they were actually afraid. So during the nine days, I was sleeping on my back and I couldn't even get my clothes changed. There were people from the civil society who heard about my story and they wanted to take me to another hospital. They took me to the military hospital. But actually, I, my situation worsened and I had a lot of fever, 42, 43 degrees. And they used ice to try to control this fever. And I suffered from a lot of pain and the fever didn't want to drop. And they also tried to drain water from my back. Before I underwent surgery on my back, I started to feel some pain in my legs. And the doctor told me that he would make a surgery. And if I get better, then perhaps I would walk again. So the first surgery was made in the military hospital. My situation was slightly better. Then I went to Al Qasab Hospital, then to Ashbal al-Waz. Then we were taken from Ashbal al-Waz to another clinic and then to Qatar. When we were about to leave to Qatar, the former Ministry of Human Rights told us that the prince of Qatar would take care of us and that we might be taken to Germany later. And we simply believed every word he said to us. So we were told that if we got adequate care in Qatar, that would be fair enough. Otherwise, we would be taken to Germany. But nothing happened there. Muslim almost lost his leg and there was not enough care given to us. Muslim, for instance, needed more care. And so his leg was worsening. And we called Tunisia to take us back to our country. We wanted to put some pressure on the state to come back to our country. Meanwhile, my father died and I couldn't even be there for to bid him farewell. The problem with me was that I was suffering from a lot of pain, which simply was so strong that I couldn't even sleep. But there was another kind of pain, and that's psychological pain because of the fact that these people would come to us during the elections. And they would simply make all kinds of promises. And we have seen a lot of politicians, of presidents of associations, liars, who simply tried to use our blood for their own purposes. I am just one of those cases of the injured of the revolution. Maybe I am one of those who benefited a lot from a mother's care, who would spend entire nights trying to take care of me. But I was one of those people who suffered most and I wouldn't show my mother all this weakness inside me and all this pain inside me. I live in a second floor. And before I came here today, I spent three months without leaving my home. And you can see how miserable this situation is. And the state has done nothing to us. We have been shot during the revolution. And the only thing we got is this wheelchair while they were fighting for positions. And we got nothing from them. This is the situation today. Khalid's mother, when I first heard about the fact that my son was shot, someone called me and told me that my son was shot. So I left home hurriedly and I was simply running to the hospital. It took me fifteen minutes instead of thirty minutes. And I heard all kinds of stories about what happened to my son. There were three martyrs, Dandan Darwish and Mohammed Habubi, who is from Kirwan and who came to work in a factory in Ras Ashbal. He was going back home and he was shot dead in the head. When I went to the hospital, my son was no longer there. And there was a lot of tension. So I was calling different people and I was told that my son was taken to the emergency unit the following day. I went to the hospital in Bizat and I met Dr. Ibrahim Qurt who informed me that my son was seriously injured in the liver, in the stomach, in the back. And he wasn't sure whether my son would recover his feet or whether he would stay alive. So I spent six days just looking at my son. But I would like to thank all those good people and I would like to thank Mr. Ibrahim or Dr. Ibrahim Qurt, who saved the life of my son. But the the hospital lacked the proper resources and equipment to take care of my son. My son was taken to he was taken to the military hospital and his situation was very serious. And I was informed that my son ran the risk of death. And there was little hope that he would stay alive. And they informed me that if I, if they called me, then that would mean that my son lost his life. I stayed there until the sixteenth of February. I used to look at my son and he was covered with ice to keep his fever under control. So I would go in the morning and leave late at night. On February sixteen, I was praying that my son would stay alive. He was about to undergo a very serious surgery. But that wasn't necessary anymore because the fever was now under control. Dr. Ruisken, I would like to thank him, took my son to another unit. But, you know, he informed him that he felt pain in his legs and he told him that that perhaps was a good sign. The following day, my son underwent surgery. That was February the seventeenth. And the doctor informed us that they did everything possible to save his life. And I was crying and I didn't want to show my tears to my son. I didn't inform him that he wouldn't walk again. That was something that I kept inside my heart. And I even accepted the idea of, you know, dying for my son. In April, they informed me that my son would be transferred to the Al Qasab Hospital, where he spent one month. The care that was given in the military hospital was excellent. I would like to thank all the staff there. This is something that they deserve. So we went to Al Qasab Hospital and my son was neglected. And they simply informed him that he wouldn't walk again. My son didn't want to smoke and he started to smoke. My son told me, "My life is shattered. I don't want you to come to see me again." And he started to tell me that he wouldn't walk again. But I simply tried to encourage him so that he would keep faith in God. We took him to Ashbal al-Waz. You know, I'm militant. My husband had cancer for ten years and he managed to overcome that condition. I used to go to Bizat and then to the military hospital in taxis. And I went for six months on a regular basis to Ashbal. Was coming from Ras Ashbal and taking different means of transport. And I never gave up. My son started to sit a little bit and then I was informed that my son would be allowed to go back home. His father hadn't seen him. When he went back home, he was helped by his brother and he was put on the bed. And his father died ten months later out of all this pain. I feel a lot of pain. I would like the entire country to listen to me. There was a lot of pain that my son felt and he took, you know, all forms of very strong drugs so that he could sleep. Samir Dilo, the former Minister of Human Rights, told us that he would be taken to Qatar. Then perhaps they would be transferred to Germany. He spent three months in Qatar and he used to call me and to tell me that the only thing they were given was massage. And I went to the constituent assembly and I asked them to bring my son back. On the twenty-seventh of Ramadan, his father died and we buried him. And I didn't want to inform my son, but some other people informed him of the death of his father. He called me and he asked me whether it was possible to talk to his father. And I said that that was not possible because his father was seriously ill. And then at the end, I informed him that his father had died and he started to cry. Then he was brought back from Qatar and we took him to Arawabi, a clinic in Bizat. Then we took him to Arabta Hospital and I would like to thank Dr. Hadad, who took good care of him. And she said that she would send him to France. And I accepted the fact that he wouldn't walk again, but I wanted something to be done to alleviate his pain. They sent a letter to a hospital in Liya and they received a positive response from the people there. Two months later, we were informed that there was no need for Khalid to be sent to Liya because Tunisians could take care of him. And they told me that the surgery would be done in Monaseer. Khalid refused to undergo this surgery. I refused to undergo this surgery. Dr. Hamri called me more than once to have this surgery and he said that it was a simple surgery. But there was a friend of mine on Facebook who talked to me about this surgery and she simply warned me not to undergo this surgery. And I believed her. I didn't want to undergo that surgery. But at the end, Dr. Hatab called me. He was the doctor who performed the surgery and he told me that it was a simple surgery with a very high likelihood of success. I finally accepted to undergo that surgery. But my problem and my weakness was pain. It's not something easy to live with. I used to feel a lot of pain in my legs and it's as if there was electricity in my legs. And I felt pain every thirty minutes. It's not something that people could live with easily. When I accepted to undergo the surgery, I was taken to the hospital. Was informed that the likelihood of success was very low, that is twenty percent. And I asked why I hadn't been informed about that. Then the doctor left and I started to talk with the team. And they told me that they had never done such a surgery. I was like someone with whom they would experiment surgery for the first time. But I was sure that they never had done such a surgery. The surgery started at eight in the morning and I left early in the evening and my back was covered with blood. It was a very painful experience actually. And the surgery was, let me say, a very violent experience for me. They tried to put some sort of an electrode in my back, but that failed. And then they tried to put a morphine tube in my back to alleviate my pain. Finally, I couldn't even move my arms. The consequences were very serious. For three days, I wouldn't even move my body. And I came to the conclusion that I would accept the pain and not become a hundred percent paralyzed. A question to you. What would you, what are your expectations? Do you have any hopes? Do you have any dreams? What I expect? What I would like to have is a house where I could live. I'm not asking for too much. At this very moment, when I suffer from pain or fever, if I want to go to the hospital, there would be one to take me there. Because I live with my mother. Sometimes I would wake her up in late at night to send her to the pharmacy to bring me some drugs. I would like to see the person who shot me brought to justice. And I can see him today still working. And this is not something acceptable. I would like to add just a couple of words, just one minute. I used to dream to see my son have a family. I'm asking for just one thing, that my son gets the appropriate medical care. If nothing could be done here, why don't send him abroad? My son takes six hundred and fifty pills a month. Please, presidents, could you help my son go or travel abroad and get the appropriate medical care? My son would spend three months without being able to leave home. Mahdi Jemha said before he left office that they had given the injured homes, but this is not true. We live in, under miserable conditions. There is not even a possibility to have my son have a decent shower. Is there a chance that my son could live in decent conditions? Because he's deprived of all this. Is this too much? Is this asking too much? Just one home for Khalid, this person who has given his blood. If wouldn't it, it was Khalid and people like him who gave their blood. Zil Abdal Ben Ali, who, there were people who were actually praising him. And then when, before he left, he said that people simply misled him. And I would like to tell the lawyer who's defending Ben Ali, you cannot bring him back to Tunisia. Because if he comes back to Tunisia, we would be there to without Ridaan, without Khalid and without all the sacrifices of these people and the Rashad and Muslim, the best of the Tunisian youth, shooting, shooting my son and then getting a promotion. I would like to say something about the military court. When the Court of First Sense issued its judgment. Here, these are the CDs. I would like to show you Tunisians. I have the evidence. We are not lying to anyone. The bullets that were shot, twenty-three injured and three people who lost their lives. It's, they reacted as if we were in a state of war while, you know, the young people were just throwing stones. Long live Tunisia.
Please don't forget Khalid. Don't forget Tunisia and hope Tunisia.
Don't forget Tunisia and hope Tunisia is from better to best. The third is Rashad Al-Arbi and his mother, Masra Liqrab, will introduce this case. Rashad Al-Arbi is one of those youth who are concerned with public issues. He joined a peaceful protest march in the Morneag city. And they protested against Ben Ali using slogans, but bullets were shot at Rashad Al-Arbi and he was injured, the neck and his left side. The bullets paralyzed him and left him handicapped. But his heart is still pumping blood into the life of Tunisians. His living heart is doing that. Good evening. I'll give you Rashad Al-Arbi. I was eighteen years old. I joined the army for service. And at the same time, I seized the opportunity to have some training. I had one year and six months. In two thousand and nine, I was released and I registered for another diploma in a vocational training center. During that training period, we were requested to, we were asked to stay at home because it was a very critical period. I used to follow closely the events on social networks and was actually among the first to follow the events of the Bazizi when he set himself on fire. Actually, it was like just a couple of hours after the event. And ever since, I was monitoring the situation and I was very concerned and I know the value of my country. On the thirteenth of January, along with some of the people of my city, we decided to organize a peaceful protest march to go to the governorate of Ben Arus. The police station was on the main avenue. We stopped, there were clashes between us and the police officers at the station. We were on the other side of the police station, on the other side of the road. We were like forty to fifty meters from the police station. It was closed and inside there were officers. We protested and called for the departure of Ben Ali and we protested against especially the killings. I was watching and I was informed of the many that were killed by the brutal Ben Ali police. And it is an aspect that we have rejected always and we... Next to me, there was one of the protesters. And he said that there was a policeman who actually produced his gun from the window. I was very zealous and was in the front row and I was protesting. And I had stones in my hands and I was very anxious. The policeman with no pity and no mercy shot me. My friend told me, Rashad, move away. At the same time, when I tried to get him away, when I raised my hand to throw the stone, he shot me and he deliberately wanted to kill me because he shot me in the chest at a very short distance. He tried to kill me, but it's actually the opposite. Thank God, that shot actually gave me more enthusiasm and more actually enthusiasm for my city young people. The shot was fatal, but they very rapidly transferred me to the hospital of Ben Arus. I was shot around four o'clock in the afternoon. Without any previous warning or shooting of gas or anything. That bullet wanted to end my life and to appease everything and to silence me, but it was the opposite. I went to the Ben Arus hospital. I had a surgery because I had an internal bleeding. The bullet actually touched the artist that my heart's veins, the bullet pierced my chest and stopped at the third level of my bones and as well as the marrow and ended up by paralyzing me. It is that day that changed my entire life. I had a surgery in order to evacuate the blood. The operation lasted four to five hours. I was under anesthetic still and then I was transferred to a Rapta hospital. And I was in a very critical situation, that I did not know. My mother was following me and was with me from Ben Arus Hospital and actually can tell more about what happened to me. Good evening, the mother is talking. It is this opportunity, this space that I have been waiting for a long time and I've been very happy because it is what we want to say as the world listens to us. We have talked a great deal since the thirteenth of January until today. We have been talking and nothing changed. Hopefully, after this session, we will see the signs of salvation. What Rashad mentioned is that when the police shot him ruthlessly, the bullet was fatal and then started the burdening life of my son. He was shot at four and I heard around five. The neighbors informed me and the neighbors were discussing amongst themselves who would inform me about that and they did not know. The boys were telling their mothers that Rashad died and don't tell, but then finally one of the women pulled herself together and found the carriage and she came to tell me that my son was hit with a stick on his chest. We went to the Esme Net, we did not find him there and then we went to the hospital of serious burns. We arrived there, we were not entering a hospital. It was like entering a killing house or slaughterhouse. There was blood everywhere, people were everywhere, blood on the walls, blood on the floor. It was extremely horrible what we have seen at five o'clock that afternoon. And years after that, I can't really forget that scene. I entered, I asked. I had no information whether he was there or not, I was just asking. They said that the young man was in the scanner room and they said, we don't think that it's your son because maybe he died. We were looking everywhere. His brother contacted the security who told him that somebody is being admitted to the emergency ward. And then upon the arrival of his brother, he arrived that actually he knew from a sign on his legs, on his feet actually. And then actually what happened is that the trouble started there. I would like to say more about the doctors, the three doctors that dealt with my son. Honestly, we have doctors and we have performing medicine. We have geniuses. That this shot was fatal, but Allah was there overlooking and other doctors were working to save him. Doctor Jarboi was there and the internal bleeding was very serious. By the time that he would be transferred to the cardiology ward and but the operation lasted for a long time. I was there and I was preparing my children because I was planning and it was in my mind I was going, I was going to find the policeman and avenge myself on him. But then he was transferred to the emergency ward. The doctor felt that the shot actually impacted the marrow and he asked him to move his legs. His right leg could not be moved. But then as soon as he recovered from anesthesia, he was transferred from that hospital to a Rapta cardiology. I was with him in the ambulance. He was not aware. And it was telling me that his chest was hurting. And he repeated all the time, I don't want to die, mom. I don't want to die, mom. And I told him, you're not going to die. Then we were admitted to the cardiology. Doctor Janel Ziyadi took care of him and I would like to commend what he did. He knew everything. And then the surgery lasted about four or five hours. The doctor, after finishing, he was looking for me and he came to tell me before I took, before I, before I, after looking at the scanners and the x-rays, I was going to tell you, don't expect miracles. But thank God, I did not find you because when I opened the chest, I found that deep inside there was something else that was struggling to survive and helping me. Now, the troubles, all the troubles, three surgeries, is that the bullet that hit him that was removed by the orthopedist, he said that after you finish that, I want that, I want you to give me the bullet. After the surgery, he came and he said, where's the bullet? He said, I can't give it to you, I have to give it to an investigating judge. Four months after the recovery and he was still unconscious, when he was being transferred to natural care and massage. Because he said that we cannot, we cannot really transfer him to massage four months after. After four months, we discovered that he was paralyzed. He said, somebody should really transfer to a private hospital. But he said, the last thing I can do with Rashad, who's like my own son, I will find an ambulance, an equipped ambulance to transfer him to a natural care center. He said, where that bullet? He said, that bullet, you remember that during that revolution when we were actually being aggressed and everything? I don't know if he's really fooling me or something. He said that the bullet, when I removed it, I put it in the pocket of my jacket, but then my jacket was stolen. I'll let interpretation for you. Shbail West is a situation, I cannot tell you about the situation there, food, bed, everything. Every day, I receive phones, bring this, bring that in hand, that the blood is dropping, the level of blood is dropping. After five months, he went back home. Here, I would like to thank Nawat. Mousar Batibi. He is the one, after six months, Nawat's website is... And Rashad was not known, we were actually suffering and dealing with... I have five family members, I have five children. We made all the sacrifices except that Rashad was, who used to weigh ninety kilograms, lost weight and it dropped to forty-five. Ever since, we started a new phase and that phase, it is how nice Tunisian people were there, those who supported us. And until now, we were still friends, people supported us by all means, money, advice. Once a woman called me, and I hope that she's listening to me, she told me, I can't help you, but I want to tell you that if that's correct, I can tell you how to deal with that naturally. That period, I hope we find it again because it is the best of moments in the Tunisian revolution. When my son left, he left with all those scars, it was a big map on his body. And then there was, it was a form of a sacred patching at a center and it was at the rehabilitation center, at Nawat Center. Efforts to join, there are people, a businessman paid for his operation with a double Lambo and now it's almost, it has almost disappeared. They paid for that at a private clinic. It's a side scar was more or less there. Then there was a hunger strike in Nawat, many young people with us here, maybe who can remember that. Then we were, there was a big, big turmoil at that time. Then a businessman who was contacted by Ramzi Batibi, who paid for his care, Rashad and Mohamed Douby from Al-Khrib, who paid for their care at a private clinic. But then when he withdrew, he was actually ashamed. They told him that how can... But then, when he withdrew, he was actually ashamed, they told him that, "How can you really help these people? This revolution did not bring us any favors." At the same time, another businessman, he had big hopes and he had a big scenario, but then finally, we really moved backward instead of progressing. I told them I wanted to go with my son. We stayed four months, maybe six months after we stayed in that, these centers were nothing, they were, they were centers for, in France, in, in centers that were not adapted to their situation, even the therapy was actually for people who were amputated or else. The only two situations were Mohamed Dubei and others in this situation. He spent a lot of money and I know. But then finally, what was the objective later on, which I discovered, when he brought in the, the bills and he brought them to human rights and Mr. Samir Dilo can remember that. What was his objective? I don't want to know what the objective was. But then finally, we stayed at home, a human rights, then there was the troika, during the troika period. The situation was chaotic at the ministry of prime, the prime ministry, at the presidential palace, at the Ministry of Justice and the Human Rights. With Mr. Sadkawi, it was possible to bring, to go, to collect all the files at the level of the ministry and to know all the cases, case by case, during the troika government. Myself and many of the injured, at that time, I would like to thank President Marzouki, who supported us by all means. Financially, I can't say that, I don't know whether his, the rest of his salary, he was taking a third and the rest to others. But he used to give us money. The medicine was delivered exactly, on exact dates, he used to assist us materially. God bless him. He actually did that psychologically and materially, but then the second government arrived, we started being marginalized and excluded. Why are we losing progress? Why? Because it's maybe lack of information from other people. Personally, there was a medical commission that was established. I went, I contacted them and I congratulated them. He said, "We don't know what the needs our children are, maybe had of Nisma." What would they say? Maybe it's a kidney, but I don't know if it is that. So I said, "A medical commission that would be established, this is, and the logic of things, it would include many specialties, an orthopedist, a neurologist, a psychologist or psychoanalyst, psychiatrist." These are the requirements. Then in turn, they would take a patient that would diagnose the situation. I don't know these matters. But many situations, like Mohamed Dubei, his situation worsened. He was actually rejecting kidneys. Why? Because it's of negligence. But then the commission, the medical commission, instead of a medical commission, instead of seeing a medical commission, we saw a initiative commission that was actually checking the documents. Khadid Mohamed Dubei Sarfani, who now had a hernia and many other complications. So there was no firm control from the commission, which on whom, from whom he had great hopes. Then Nazrino became Secretary of State of the Martyrs. We have contacted her and we have seen her and we have the evidence. Verbally, she never said no, but in practical terms, nothing has been done. Until she left and she became Minister of Youth. So for us, nothing happened. So we honestly, what is really sickening is the situation of the Tunisian people. They're all are frightened. Please allow me. The cases, there was no justice. And the media wanted to falsify history and provide false witnesses and obscure truth. Allah will never bless that. The rain is falling and people are complaining, all the, all the goods, there's a, there's a great affluence, there's a great abundance. But people have been accomplice to neglect and obscure the rights of the injured. In this situation, the country will never find truth, as justice is the essence of urbanity. We have a historical opportunity to remedy to the situation, but history would document that those who have sacrificed, made the sacrifices have made calls through IVD. And there's another core issue that is, that is, that is the international, at the international level, communities of the international communities. To them, I tell them, "Just leave us, just let us alone. We want Tunisia to be the state, the country of justice and freedom so that the right of the martyrs is not lost." And another issue of no less importance, it's the fate of the cases and the military judiciary because the history would witness that. But I would like to mention all those who have monitored the situation, that there is still an honest judiciary and history that gave them a lesson in that. And wanted to prepare and say that we need, and then what we have been, the, let's say guys, that the specialized chambers that would be enacted in March, that would be, start the working. But it is the last opportunity for Tunisia to unveil the truths and embed dignity and any attempt actually to neglect and also to obscure those fights or to marginalize them is a marginalization of the country. For us, every injured in a family, it's the whole family and every martyr, it's all the family, it's all the home that is shattered. So the, the 13th of January, everyone was shattered. One of my children had facial paralysis, my, my, and now he had to go to massages. My daughter failed her classes, failed her school year. And then my other son, they were calling me, they were calling me at school and telling me to actually to find support for my child because he was losing the path and he was losing reason. He was talking about blood and everything else. Six years later, I would like to say that there is, I would like to say that there are some honest police officers and when I see them, I say, "Yes, I am secure." But still, there are police officers who are criminals. What we want is to see the judiciary taking its course. When the cases would be addressed, we'd know the CVs of every injured and the act and when that happened and what situation and in what situation. When you were shot at this person and you wanted to kill this person, there was, there were phases to be respected. There is escalation phases and no phases respected. You wanted to kill this person directly. And now, the first to receive the advantages and the privileges, including increases in wages, it is because of the revolution. They profited, they, the police officers profited from that. But I want to tell them that we are not destroyed that and every year we get stronger and we get more determined and we're still here and God willing, we have great hopes and we have great hopes for the IVD is that, God willing, that the specialized chambers would give us good find our rights. My last word, before I give my last word to Rashad. On the 14th of January, many words have been, have been perpetuated in Tunisia. Glory to the revolution, glory to Tunisia. All these words as if they have been, they have been said this moment. But I would like to tell the police officers and I would tell the people who see us on the street and say, "Stop talking about the revolution, it's over." But I would like to say, yes, we will talk until truth is unveiled. But I would like to say, and one of the last news, I would like to all Tunisia to know this, Rashad is going to get married in summer and I want all Tunisia to be there. Life continues. I want all Tunisians to attend this wedding. The revolution happened, but it's not finished yet. We have been destroyed, but not entirely destroyed. We are more determined. This revolution will continue. We have handed it over to Tunisians. We granted you that freedom, that freedom should be preserved. Freedom is never granted, but you have to know the value of that freedom and that you have to restore the dignity to all those who gave their lives. It was an opportunity for us also to give the dignity to everyone. I hope that their fate will only be the paradise. I, my wish was to die that day, but thank Allah, I am still alive so that I make their voices heard and that I would also know, make known their principles and achieve what they wanted to achieve. What I really blame Tunisians for is that the word revolution has become a source of shame. But this revolution occurred, it happened. It happened, it was not a coup. It happened and it will continue, but, but the media has played a great role to repress that. You are bringing Trebalsi to talk again. What use of him is for me? Let the people who made the revolution talk. I hope you keep it, I hope you defend it and hope we progress. Thank you Rashad, thank you. I want to invite all of Tunisia to Rashad's wedding in summer. We will move on to an important theme that has been discussed by everyone. People have been talking about judiciary and the independence of the judiciary. The judiciary has its own people and those who defended it and defended its independence in very critical times. Today, we will listen to the testimony of Mrs. Fatma Yahyawi, the wife of the late Mokhtar Yahyawi, the honest judge and the testimony of his own daughter, Amira. Mr. Mohammed bin Salem would introduce the case. This case is a case of using the judiciary under Ben Ali. In most of the cases, it was operating under instructions. When actually we know that it is the third power and its mission is actually to ensure the non-violation of the laws and, and it should actually also fulfill its role in dealing with executive branch. The late Mokhtar Bahlaoui, Yahyawi said his word in front of an oppressive ruler, aware of the holy mission he had, as it should be, and he was the honest, strong judge. In the 90s and after 2000, after the, the influence of the executive of judiciary became paramount importance. This led to the slippages of the judiciary. The late Mokhtar Yahyawi was the one who voiced the expression of justice. He was a prosecutor, chief prosecutor in the First Instance Court of Tunis and he wrote a letter back then, asking the president to lift the control over the judiciary. And the response was that he was sometimes intimidated until he was dismissed from the judiciary. So his, his wife and daughter will speak about the injustice that was sustained by the late Yahyawi. My name is Fatma Yahyawi, I'm the widow of Mokhtar Yahyawi. I was hoping he would be here, present, to speak more overtly, but destiny decided otherwise and I hope to be up to the level of this testimony. Those who don't know, Judge Yahyawi, he was born in 1952 in the area of delegation of Gomrasen in the south of Tunisia. He moved to Tunis at an early age and continued his education in Tunisia and he graduated from the School of Law and then he had a postgraduate degree in the Sorbonne University in Paris. And then he came back to Tunisia and he also passed the examination of the judiciary. He started, entered the judiciary in 1983 and he has been entrusted, had been entrusted with many duties in the property court, investigation district courts and then he ended up in the 10th district in the trial court of Tunis where he spent some time. In the meantime, among the things he used to say is that this chamber where he worked, the number of cases that arrived were a huge number of cases that, but he couldn't imagine, they couldn't explain the reason. Even his colleagues, the members in the panel, they feel so tired because he was overworking them, dealing with the enormous number of cases. What I know about him and everybody knew about that, that he was overzealous and he was renowned for being a straight man. He doesn't even attend cafes. He was very respectful of his job as a judge, bound by the principle of reservation, as we know in the, there are interventions, instructions, trying to influence the judges by the authorities and even before 2001, in 2000 and 2001, I felt that he was under pressure, he was a bit anxious and nervous. There were some critical cases, I don't know about cases, but there was a critical case. He refused to sit down for a case because he was providing the right to defense to the foreign defendant and my husband refused to sit down for that case and that was considered as a gesture of defiance and he was the subject of pressure, especially after that case. Can you tell us more about the case? If, back then, this case, there was blackmail by the If, back then, this case, there was blackmail by the in-law Mansub al-Ali of the former dictator, so they wanted to exert pressure. There were other acts, I don’t have all of the details because he was quite reserved and quite unforthcoming when it comes to the cases under his hand. So he was under immense pressure at the circuit where he was working. Even his office, there were detectives and policemen. And some of the funny things, the dustbin is left in front of his office for two or three days. And when he asked the woman in charge of cleaning up, she said, “This dustbin goes on its own feet,” so to speak. And because they take it in order to check the kind of paper that was thrown in there. So everything was searched, in fact. And so, as I said, he was subject to immense pressure. And down deep inside, I believe that he came to the decision and he consulted with some law experts like Mr. Mukhtar Trefi in the League of Human Rights and Mr. Bashir bin Ahmed in Jean Afrique magazine. He was complaining about the situation of the judiciary being very bad and that the situation became unbearable. And as you know, he was speaking on behalf of many judges, so he and down deep inside, he decided to react to that situation. In 2001, in July, on the 6th of July 2001, he drafted a letter. I didn’t know about that letter, he didn’t consult with his relatives, his brother. And then, in leisure, he said that he didn’t want us to get involved. And so, he took this decision after deep reflection. And so, that was a letter of resignation that he sent by registered mail to the president of the republic, who was back then the president of the Supreme Judicial Council, with the address of the Ministry of Justice. And he did not put his name on the envelope. The letter was signed by his name. So they received the letter and they returned the letter because of unknown destination. Because they didn’t know the name of the address. So when the letter was returned, unknown address. So, there was the bailiff at the 10th district. He told him to take the letter to the Chief Justice, Mr. Abdouf Boucheikh, and to deliver that letter to that Chief Justice. But the Chief Justice said, “Return the letter to him.” And so, people were terrorized back then about such decisions. And people would not dare do such things. He knew about everything and he was resolved, strongly resolved, to resign. And then, afterwards, he decided to publish his letter on the internet. We were on a summer holiday. He told us about the he gave us the letter to, when I was reading that letter, I could not believe that the content of the letter was published. I was very afraid and I could not describe the situation. And he said, “Don’t worry, don’t worry, don’t worry. We are up to the responsibility.” And I thought that he would be arrested or could be taken away or imprisoned. But because the internet was not very common, but the Human Rights Watch and international organizations were informed about the content of that letter since it was published. And instantly, there were reactions from everywhere, from news agencies and from abroad and at all different levels. And there was a huge reaction. And he talked to me over the phone and he was happy about this international reaction. And he told me to take care of the kids. With your permission, I’ll read some excerpts from this letter. Shall I read the letter myself? I so, to the Supreme, to the president of the Supreme Judicial Council of the judiciary, I wrote this letter to express the miserable condition of the judiciary, which led to the ridding of the judges of their constitutional powers. And he said in other excerpts, “The Tunisian judges are frustrated everywhere and they are obliged to hand down rulings that are not binding by the law.” And the judges are frustrated. Many judges reacted negatively to that and said, “We are not frustrated.” But other judges also supported my late husband, even though they could not express themselves. Regarding this paragraph, this was the only time when the judges expressed their attitude about the letter. They said, they, in the past, they used to say that the situation was very good under Ben Ali. But when he sent that letter, no judge came or said anything. I finish the last paragraph. “As we dealt with our daily work, we are no longer bound by the duty of reservation and all channels of balanced dialogue has been ended. And there’s no time for me to remain silent anymore. And even if we are imprisoned, we would satisfy our conscience.” And therefore, this is, these are some of the excerpts of the letter. And the countdown began as of then. And there were some support and some harassment at the same time. A week after, the Minister of Justice Bashir Takiri issued the decision to dismiss him and to suspend his salary. And he was also accused of violating the principle of reservation. And there were rumors that were spread against him. And our house became subjected to close surveillance. I cannot remember exactly the situation back then, but we were under immense pressure. We used to be a quiet family. He would go to his work and come back home. But after that letter, our house became invaded by everyone. We have been also visited by many supporters, the Human Rights Watch. There were some citizens who came to our house. And some people came from long distances, from Gasserin, from Gaffa, from the south, to congratulate my husbands for his bravery. And this had had a positive impact on himself, on ourselves. He, just to reassure me, he would tell me, “Look how people reacted to the letter that I wrote and in which I denounced the situation.” And he would tell me how the people who were subject to injustice were happy with this letter. It was a dreadful situation indeed because the former regime was a frightening regime. There were also press articles on the newspapers. On the other hand, the government tried to exert pressure on my husband in order to withdraw his letter and to change his mind. And some intermediaries were sent to the house. And I would mention some of those people. There was counsel Faisal Triki, who is a lawyer. There was Judge Boubackar. And there was another advisor to the president in the law, an executive law enforcement officer, Mohammed Shukri. Mr. Faisal and Ridha would come to the house every in the morning, the afternoon, in the evening. They would try to talk him into giving up his letter to try to write something different and withdraw what he had mentioned in his letter. And that what he wrote was under a moment of rage and fury. And they tried to persuade him to change his mind. But he was strongly resolved and he was solemnly resolved. These are folks who were his classmates and therefore, they were close friends to him. They tried on a daily basis to talk him out of that letter. And in the evening, they would, they would at the beginning, they tried to persuade him, “This is a dangerous, dangerous speech and that he is bound by the requirement of reservation, that he should not write such letters.” And once, but since he did not respond to their request, he was, he was subjected to the disciplinary measures. Mr. Mohammed Shukri took my father to his house and he put a gun on his head and he told him to withdraw everything he said. And many of the people who are present here remember when he told this story. This man who pointed his gun to his head is still living today in quiet and peace, as if nothing had happened. And then after he pointed the gun to his head, he took him in front of the Ministry of the Interior, Avenue B. Burghiba, next to our house. So he would tell my father, “You look at those offices, they are still lit and those folks are still waiting for you.” My sister, Rania, was only 10 years back then. She was eight years old, rather. Rania was playing near our house. Mr. Ridha Boubackar, the judge, he would put his hand on the head of my sister, Rania. He says, “Don’t worry for your daughter,” as if he was threatening his family. So when we go to take her from the nursery school, we would really wonder whether we would find her or not. And therefore, whether she could make it home, whether she would be kidnapped. And and these folks are now go really walking unpunished and this kind of pressure that my daughter has mentioned has been used on many occasions. There were statements on newspaper, Le Monde by Juge Robert and the statement that my husband gave to Jean Afrique magazine that aroused the fury of the government because he gave those statements to those big newspapers like Le Monde and Jean Afrique. So they exerted pressure on my husband, trying to compel him to write a different statement in Jean Afrique magazine, to apologize publicly that I wrote that letter. But after deep reflection, I came back to my senses and I changed my mind. And they prepared this statement for my husband to be signed. And, and when they, when you read those paragraphs, it’s really unacceptable. Mr. President, I apologize. He said my husband was categorically, emphatically against such statements and he would not sign those papers. So they tried, so they tried to modify and edit that statement. And finally, they published that statement and said that my husband was the one who wrote it. But in reality, he never wrote that article. Thereafter, pressure continued with threats of death because he never accepted. Then they tried to tempt him into some positions in embassies abroad. Or they tried to tempt him with job offers in the lawyering profession. So they tried by all means to tempt him and make him change his mind. So they wanted to influence him. The pressure continued, all of these, this situation continued for a long time. In November 2001, with some lawyers and human rights activists who were supporting my husband, they decided to set up the Tunisian Center for the Independence of the Judiciary in November. And my husband Mukhtar Yahyawi never withered away. He continued. They went to the governorate in order to obtain license for their association. But they, to no avail, they continued to to challenge and defy the government. Of course, they stood firmly in respect of their principles. And finally, the ministry of justice subjected him to disciplinary to disciplinary measures in the last month to avoid the presence of some foreigners who would come abroad in his support. We went to the tribunal with my daughter, Amira, with another, with French lawyer Azimah Peré, who came in late December. We went to the upper appellate court. And I can’t remember, I can’t forget that day, there were so many lawyers present. Most of them, most of whom I didn’t know. I was there were more security officers than lawyers in an effort to intimidate my husband. He was walking in steadfast fashion, firmly. And he said to me that this is what I’m up against. There were more than 150 lawyers who were there. They prevented me and my daughter to enter, to go with him. They said, “Why can’t we go upstairs?” So we were pushed away. But some lawyers, whose names I cannot remember, and they try, then the lawyers stood firmly against the police officers. And we were taken upstairs where there was the office of the Chief Justice of the upper appellate court. And his office could not be big enough for the huge number of the lawyers. So of course, for the lawyers, it was a big event. But I personally was a bit lost in this crowd. There was a lot of There was a lot of screaming. The lawyers withdrew and my husband, Mukhtar Hiyawi, withdrew. And we know in advance what the decision will be like. So we went home. The dismissal decision was taken beforehand in the evening before that day. And therefore, the next day, the decision of dismissal was handed down. It was an expected decision. I was shocked at that decision, thinking about my children, what would become of them afterwards. I've seen some samples of the pressure and the harassment by those folks who surround the house, police officers dressed in casual clothes and in uniforms. So the dismissal decision came and we entered a new period. Our house was open. The discussions that I've heard that took place in our house, which was an ordinary house, there were lots of, lots of informants who would come. He knew all of them, I wouldn't know them sometimes. He says, the person who came to the house was not, he pretended to be in support of me, but actually he came to gather information and they sometimes tried to spy on us. We have, we have been taught transparency with Ben Ali. So you should, you should leave everything open. I remember a meeting in the living room and the telephone was ringing and I, I heard him talk about the hunger strike that day. I was only 16. And my mother is right when she says that the lawyers are accustomed to being beaten. The lawyers were pulling me from one side and the police officers were bullying from the other side. And the lawyers would tell us, don't worry, we are well-equipped to face the police officers. So it's true that my mother was worried about what would become of us in the future, after my father would be dismissed. At that moment, I felt that our family became greater. There were 51 lawyers and we, I had a feeling that they became members of our family. We have been adopted among hundreds and therefore we came out or we turned, we, we were turned from a small family into a bigger family. From this nuclear family, we moved to a big family. When we were kids, my father wouldn't want us to live only with the relatives and folks of the judges. He wanted us to mix with the ordinary people and, and for... So we mixed with everybody's children and now we became a bigger family. Everyone is part of the family now. And we moved from the nuclear family to the extended and big family named Democracy and Liberty. This is the thing that made us feel as children and those whose children lived with us, that those moments. The thing I'm most proud of is when I call my father the former judge and I explain why my father was a former judge. And that became a source of pride to me. And that made me feel of belonging to something that is noble. It was a privilege, not a problem. I remember in 2007, there was a blogger who wrote something about the freedom fighters who are not worthy of being parents because they put their children in the front fire, in the frontline of fire. When I read that article, the first thing I, I said, I hope that my father would not read that article because I felt hurt. And, and you cannot, as, as a father, when you decided to struggle, not to bend down, not to bend down, what you have done is much bigger than the food you get put on my table and the drink you put on my table. You taught us democracy and dictatorship. That was a great achievement. We would feel better when we ask us, how are you doing? We say, we're doing fine, we're doing great. We speak our mind and we are afraid to speak our minds. Something else I wanted to add, after the dismissal of my husband. He used to write a lot of articles and he would put in the drawers and he would write on many topics. After his dismissal, he wanted to react. He wrote an article, this is your judiciary returned to you. This is a year that begins and you refused that I started with you and you only did injustice against you yourselves. I am the case and you are the victims. So I thank you for clearing me and I only fear for the cumbersome situation of your judiciary now and the miserable situation that it is in. Our voices and our conscience will always be quiet and clear and our humanity emanates from our consciousness. And he, he wanted to say it publicly. We are worlds apart. I know that you have picked your victim and I know that your decision had been taken in advance. Mrs. Fatma, after the dismissal, you were subjected to a lot of oppressive measures like cutting off livelihoods. When he published this letter, among the things that they did, they sent a ministerial delegation to the small delegation where we live, it's a small area. They sent a top-level ministerial delegation headed by Abdaziz bin Deir and they wanted to ask information about my husband. And they went to his native delegation. They frightened the people there, telling them that they should distance themselves from my husband in his native town. And those people were ordinary people who were afraid and could not stand and rise to these governmental authorities. His brother also was deprived of any promotional prospects. He wanted to make a project. He was harassed. The late Zuhair, his family would give the testimony. He was among the first people who started blogs and tried to use satirical remarks on Ben Ali on the blogs. After the dismissal, they wanted to harass us because you didn't want to apologize, you didn't want to change your mind, you stood in defiance of us, you were supporting all human rights and hunger strikes. When my late husband would decide to go to the mining basin to attend the events and to support the people he was stopped and returned to Tunis, he was denied access to the mining area. The livelihoods of his siblings also were under pressure and they would use all kinds of obstacles in order to close down a hotel that was, that used to belong to my husband's siblings. And therefore, they pushed him to poverty. In 2005, it was the summit about the information technology and because of the union of journalists and the association of judges started to move. And there was also many hunger strikes by human rights activists and he took part in a hunger strike for a period of a month in 2005. They stood together. In that year, Zuhair died after he was tortured in prison and my husband was very affected by his death, the death of Mr. Zuhair. The struggle continued. And then the events of the mining basin, my husband would follow the events meticulously. He was also following on the events and the articles of the bloggers, Slim Amamu, Aziz Amamu, Nawet members, Sufyan Shorabi. All of these folks would come to my house and my husband was very, very happy with their presence. He used to believe in youth and you are, he always would tell the youth, you are the ones who would take over. Of course, I'm sure that we were wiretapped and that everything was being recorded, but my, my husband wouldn't care until the events from the 17th of December until the 14th of January 2011, the revolution that was sparked off by Bouazizi. I pay tribute to all of the revolutions wounded and martyrs who sacrificed themselves for the glory of this country. My husband would follow closely these events. I remember that he would not go to sleep. Anything that was published on Facebook and Twitter, he would follow up on it in close contact with the social networks. And on the 14th of January in the morning, he left the house. He said that he wouldn't let us go out when there were demonstrations, especially my daughter, Amira. She was very impressed by what her father had done and she would get involved in such situations of protests and she was beaten in front of Sadiqi School in Avenue of Burghiba in a protest on the hunger strike. Also, she was beaten on the 14th of January. He said, you would take the kids and we would go to Avenue of Burghiba. I told him this would be dangerous. He said, this would be a great day. And we were very close to Habib Burghiba Avenue. He said, don't worry, there's no fear. He told us to go, to take to the streets. I went with my sister. Amira was in France. She was deprived of her passport for five years and she could not come to Tunisia because she, they would not renew, they would not renew her passport. She was denied entry to Tunisia because she was deprived of her passport, even though she was a young girl. So on the 14th of January, we took to the streets in Avenue of Burghiba and we shouted the Degage slogan and we saw the law enforcement officers, the military forces, as you saw that on TV. And I was very scared and afraid for my kids in these confrontations. It's those militants who will be the first to be hardest hit. And I saw the wounded of the revolution, some innocent youngsters who were carried away and frustrated by the situation of unemployment. Some died, some had their legs amputated. We took to the street. As we, our house was close to the Habib Burghiba Avenue. We did not attend the big events, but when, when we went back home, my husband would tell me, Ben Ali is finished. And I tell him, how can that be true? And he says, it's over, it's over. And so we witnessed the successive events that happened so quickly that led to the escape of the dictator. And we were very joyful afterwards. And now give the floor to Amira to speak about the post-revolution
So before all that, and Siham, you remember well, that we thought a lot before we submitted our case to the Truth and Dignity Commission. So we hesitated quite a lot before coming and make this testimony. Why? Because you know, the most important word which affected us as a family is the preservation of the memory. If a father decides to sacrifice his life to the whole country, so it is no longer your own father, he's the father of everybody and everybody has a right to this father. So this is very important and he belongs to everyone and especially for the Tunisian justice and the Tunisian judiciary. So when we came to attend this public hearing session, we were, in fact, I was motivated by the appearance of Bilhassan Trabelsi on TV channel. So in fact, the Trabelsi family are still in fact motivating us in order to defend ourselves and also to stand firm. Why? It's just because of the situation. In fact, we reached the Tunisia in just living all this. When I listened to Bilhassan Trabelsi speaking on the TV channel as if we were, we are the people who should apologize and not, and in fact, transitional justice becomes a duty and not only a right. So Tunisians, in fact, who didn't know anything about this, in fact, did not follow what happened and they should know what happened. When I see the mothers and the wounded of the revolution and I am really impressed by all the victims of the revolution who came today to make their testimony. I mean, I feel much more motivated. So these are the people who made this revolution and at some times we feel ashamed and we do not, do not even dare to say... And we do not, do not even dare to say that it's a revolution. You feel that you are no longer in the year 2016. You feel as if you were in the year 2010. And we no longer speak about democracy. And for some, democracy is nothing. In fact, the three victims, the three wounded who came today to talk on behalf of themselves and on behalf of the martyrs, they, the three of them spoke about the judiciary and the role of transitional justice in order to make our country progress. And nobody can make progress if, in fact, we do not, in fact, focus on all these problems relating to the judicial system. In 2016, when my father died, what I felt is that my father died and he felt so frustrated because of the judicial system. So my, my father, in fact, died and he felt really frustrated because, in fact, his struggle, in fact, was really bitter. Because he believes that there are three powers. So even when we speak about how to reform the Ministry of Interior, we cannot help speaking about the Ministry of Justice. You know, people who are killing. I mean, this has become something normal. So when we speak about the judiciary, it has become like speaking about something taboo. It's something really dark. And we cannot really speak about it. I mean, my mother and I came because we would like the Tunisians to understand that it is not true that nothing happened in the judiciary. Many people sacrificed their life. Not only Judge Makhthari Yahwi, other judges also voiced their opinion. And they wanted really to improve our judicial system. And what I still remember is how my father was dismissed from his job because he did not respect the duty of reservation. What they mean by this is that you should accept their instruction. You make the court ruling they wanted to make. So when we speak about the confidentiality or the duty of reservation for them, it means that you shall not enjoy integrity and you do not have the right to improve the judicial system. My father, Judge Makhthari Yahwi, in fact, did not only suffer from pressure in some cases or because he set for, he set for a case where the former president's brother was involved. But also, he used to criticize the penal system. And also, he used to criticize our legislation. And how in the 90s and in the year 2000, we are still using legislation which was enacted in 1914 and 1916. So he believed that prison can never be a solution. Prison is a problem if we just throw people in prison for any reason. So it means that we are incapable of having educated our people. And also, in fact, the solution is not to have our prison overcrowded. I want just to read an interview that he made with Omzi where he said that the judiciary, in fact, in fact, lacks trust and integrity. So these determining measures and selective punishment made by the regime are, were still existing because of our Penal Code, which in fact dates back to the 18th century. And the court decisions were so severe and strict to such a point that we need really to reform our judiciary. So my father, in fact, used to have his own vision of the judiciary and of justice during his career. He used to, in fact, to think about his code of ethics. And you know, many judges did not used to do that. So of course, a judge shall abide by the law. But in fact, my father did not really stop at this level. So he spoke about the fact that the law might be severe and the law might be wrong. And in his career and even after the revolution, so he used really to criticize the factor of throwing people, children in prison for the least thing. So he supported youth as a judge. He used to tell them that he was with them. And in fact, he used really to encourage them to reform our legislation. And in fact, he used to have this progressive vision of the judiciary, which goes beyond the judiciary in order to reach justice and to ensure justice. So people in Tunisia shall know the story. It's not our story of having been deprived of our rights. But I think his struggle was far from having any ideological background. His own ideology is the judge code of ethic. A judge shall have his or her own conscience that shall be used whenever deciding a court ruling. So we will continue after the 14th of January. So Judge Makhthari Yahwi, after the revolution, believed that he should contribute in reforming the judiciary. And he wrote a long statement that some head of government looked at, including Mr. Mohamed Ganoushi. He talked with Mr. Ganoushi. And Mr. Bajikad Sipsi, they spoke with him in order to see how we can improve our judicial system. But in fact, many were afraid, as Amira said, that we shall not be spontaneous. We have to be ponderous. And some people, in fact, tried to demotivate him. And they, they used to tell him that he was so strict. And even after the revolution in 2012 and 2013 and 2014, he started to feel that things were not going well, especially in the judicial system despite the revolution. During my narration, I forgot something. Judge Makhthari Yahwi filed a lawsuit to challenge his dismissal from his job. But the case was frozen. It was not really given the necessary care. So the Ministry of Justice got, in fact, this lawsuit. And he was asked to reintegrate the judiciary. But in fact, he did not want to go back. So he just, afterwards, the National Authority for the Protection of Personal Data suggested this position to him in order to preside over this authority. But he didn't want really to, to do anything. But you know, it's, he is not responsible for the reform of the judiciary and for the reform of our legislation. But he had always thought about that. He has always pushed toward that in February 2015. Judge Yahwi, in fact, isolated himself. He was not really happy with the situation of the judiciary in Tunisia. I wanted to say something important. And this is my message to all of you, that the ministers of Ben Ali are still having their retirement pension. But Mr. Makhthari Yahwi and after, in fact, the different ministers of justice did not, in fact, implement this decision except the current minister of justice, who in fact implemented, who enforced this decision. And the case is going to be resolved. And for me, it's something very important. I'm so, in fact, affected by the fact that his case was not processed and was not really dealt with in the necessary way from the beginning. Thank you very much, Ms. Yahwi. Amira, do you have anything else to say? So in fact, you cannot imagine how difficult it is. I mean, after, in fact, your father did all what he was capable of doing. And to see your mother going from one court to another or going to the Social Security Fund in order to settle a case of retirement pension. So there was a court ruling in 2011. But today, we are in 2016. But this court decision was not enforced. And especially when it is the case of a judge. I think so the law shall be respected. And unfortunately, the Ministry of Justice does not respect the judiciary and does not respect a court decision, especially after the revolution. Because we used to know the rules of the game. And we did not use to expect anything from the Ministry of Justice. But you know, five years after the revolution and the Ministry of Justice does not want to recognize this court ruling and does not respect the judiciary. So what happened is that as long as there are mothers who told me to speak about him because this revolution did not give birth to anything. And as long as there are still people who come to, in fact, to cry before just the microphone and mothers come to speak about the suffering of their children. So we are lying at ourselves. Until today, we are still thinking about things that happened 15 years ago. We cannot look ahead and we cannot look to the future. So our country is badly in need of a solid basis, of a clean basis. So you know, struggle is not, in fact, from 1987 to 2011, we shall continue our struggle. And every single Tunisian shall continue to struggle. Why? Because, in fact, we are the owner of this country. Ben Ali tried to instill these ideas in our mind, which is that this country is not ours. You know, that the owner of the country ran away. So how can we consider him as the owner of this country when he ran away and he is today living in Saudi Arabia? And we are still living in our country. If he comes back, I want really to see him in court to be judged. So today, in fact, what is funny is that we are talking about cases against Ben Ali, which pertain to checks and money and forget about high treason and about the killing he caused. So in fact, truth is good, but it's also bitter. But today, we are grown ups. We used to be children. And in fact, when we were teenagers, in fact, we did all what we were capable of doing. But today, we are adults and we have to assume our responsibility. And in fact, when you, you have to accept the good and the bad. And you have to, in fact, redeem anything better. And I hope next time when we speak about all these problems, I hope my father's frustration is over. And this is all what we wanted to say. Thank you very much. The last case and the last testimony we're going to listen to is about forced enrollment in the military service. Our colleague, Mr. Slajjin Rashid, will speak about this program and what we mean by forced enrollment. So when we speak about forced enrollment in the military service, we are speaking about human rights violation which affected schoolchildren and university students who were forced to enroll in the army in order to be educated. in order to be deprived of continuing their studies and deprived of their graduation, but also deprived of having a job. So this was a systematic violation. So it happened in 1966 and in 1967. It also occurred in 1973 and also in 1984 and 1990. And it also occurred in 1991. So it's a repeated violation. So in fact, it was also, it coincided with some important dates, which remind you of many important things and many important political events. So schoolchildren and university students were targeted by forced enrollment. As it happened in 1990, when Professor Farid Lili now, let me introduce to you, Mr. Farid Lili, who will speak about this series experience, which is also accompanied by torture, which may even lead to death. In the name of God, the most merciful, the most compassionate. First of all, I would like to greet all the audience. And I cannot within just one day, like today, the 14th of January, which is the anniversary of the revolution, without of course paying tribute to all the martyrs of the revolution. From the first day of the national liberation movement until today, I would also like to greet all the victims and the wounded of the revolution to whom I have listened, I listened to their suffering and to their sad story. How can I start and what am I going to say? Say that when somebody falls ill and goes to a doctor, so he or she needs at least 15 or 20 minutes to conduct the necessary diagnosis to know the disease. So I don't think half an hour, an hour or an hour and a half enough to speak about this suffering. So I come here as a witness. So in fact, in my, when I submitted my file, so there was all the justification of the different violation that the Truth and Dignity Commission was looking for. So I was dismissed from school. I was deprived of being employed. I was forced to join the army. I was imprisoned in different prisons and incommunicable detention. So how am I going to start? So let me be methodical and also tell you my story in a chronological way.
Like any Tunisian, as a pupil, a student in the governorate of Al-Khaf, known for its mountainous areas, renowned by its misery and poverty, I've grown in an environment characterized by the misery and the poverty. I've also witnessed the revolution of the bread from day one till the end. And during that period, I started to develop the revolutionary tendencies in the school, the secondary school of Al-Khaf. And the first war was declared by the headmaster of the school. I'm not going to mention his name. This gentleman declared war on me without my knowledge in the fifth grade of secondary school. In the first half of the school year, my results and my scores were good. In the second half of the year, I was made to fail my school year. And then the same thing happened in the sixth grade, before graduation from high school. And so two quarters, I was very successful. And in the third quarter, the scores were manipulated. And I also was made to fail my school year. Only then did I realize that I was the subject of some conspiracy. So I went to the delegation of education, the department, the regional department of education in order to file a complaint. And I moved to the seventh grade, but the administration would take me to the sixth grade. And the regional department of education upgraded me to the seventh grade of secondary education. Everything is documented. Any documents you need are available regarding my educational background, about my passport and my imprisonments. Everything is documented. I came today in order to tell the truth and only to tell the truth, as the previous speaker was saying, for the sake of national memory. So I passed to the next, to the upper grade by decision of the regional educational department. In the senior class of secondary school, I did not succeed. And I said, maybe I would try again next year. I only flunked one year. So in the end of that school year, the headmaster, the baccalaureate or the high school graduation was a big ceremony in which the headmaster would use the microphone to decide the successful students and those who did not succeed. So I went to work. So I received my school record in which it says that he would be expelled from school if he fails graduation year, even though I was not old, I was not too old to repeat the year. And when I went to the, I stayed for three months as a jobless. At the age of 19, I had no work. I was expelled from school because I did not succeed from the graduation year. And imagine my mother, who was so depressed at that situation. Three months later, the regional educational department looked into my case. I explained to him, from the fifth and the sixth grade, I succeeded by decision of the regional educational department. So he asked me, the head of the regional educational department asked me if I had any problem with the headmaster. I told him I was an ordinary student, keen on cultural activities, but that was all. So the head of the regional educational department told me that I am entitled to repeat the year. And he told me that he would dispatch me to Ghafor city in order to continue my education. So I accepted after three months of unemployment because I'm convinced that education is so precious. In Ghafor, thank God, I found that the headmaster was the teacher of technology and I was an excellent student at technology. So I told him the story and told him that I was dismissed from my school. And therefore, I started the seventh grade in that school. And the headmaster stood on the table and he pronounced my name as a student who was admitted as a successful senior student, high school senior student. I went to university in 97. The university year was very, very, was a kind of turmoil and was quite agitated year. And there came the period when the falsity of the slogan of the 7th of November of democracy and liberty and no more injustice. There came the February 90 movement that unveiled this falsity with enforced enrollment in the military. The dormitory was invaded in a savage way. And there was no way out to leave the dormitory. There was so many law enforcement officers using tear gas and all of the, there were lists of the students' unions and the politicized students. And I was a member of an entity in charge of cultural and athletic activities in Naboul. And we were taken, we were taken away. At the beginning, we didn't know what was going on. We thought we were arrested. We spent two nights. And the third day, we were with the canine team in Naboul. They started investigation with the known faces. They started with me with the case. And they accused me of dealing with foreign countries. And as I was engaged in cultural activities, I would go to Saudi and Palestinian cultural centers in order to prepare our cultural activities. So after three days, I discovered that there was a minister whose name I can't remember. He said that, because my mother repeated what the minister said publicly. He said, these are failed students. These are failed students. And they want to, that the school, university year would fail. That's why we will send them for national military service. I want to speak about a legal aspect. The military service is governed by law of May 82. And there are Article 21, Article 21, that regulates military service. You cannot take people in an oppressive fashion. After medical checkup, there are three groups. There are those who are apt, those who are not, and those who are inapt, and those who are suspended. Those who are suspended will be suspended for a period of time. Article 21 stipulates that the students could be delayed and excused temporarily until the age of 21 from military service. I want to say something else. As a student and as a pupil, I was hoping to take a picture with the military uniform because it is a symbol of patriotism. When they took me in full injustice and oppression and who would deprive me of my education. So when they gave me the uniform, I threw it away because I was utterly frustrated. The military service law does not allow for the enrollment of two brothers. The brothers Hamza were taken at the same time. The law does not authorize inapt people who are physically, those who are physically handicapped. The law of national military service stipulates that the military person who is working as a military man cannot be used in the military service. There are those who were studying in the academy, military academy, who were also forced into military enrollment. Now, I come to the desert. We arrived at the desert. So our heads were shaven clean. And from the first days, we understood this was not a military place. Every day, they take us separately, every day. This was like security work and we were subjected to investigation. Day after day, there was a punishment. There was always a punishment. In a hot day, on a hot day in Galat Bouflija, and I wear the entire uniform with the sweater, with the boots. And I wear a big bag full of sand. And you make me run for long distances. And those who fall are beaten with the baton. And when someone falls, so they use the baton in sensitive areas. They want to destroy you. I remember, I felt that these people were not military people. The military institution that defends the country does not engage in such acts. Torture continued in multiple ways. At night, midnight, they would get us out naked. And we have shorts, wearing shorts. And they make us crawl in rubble and until our knees start to bleed. So you crawl with the baton on your back. There are people who are physically impaired and who were made to crawl. There was a mentality within the military institution, which stipulates when you punish this crowd, suffice to punish one person. Who is this person to be punished? This was the martyr Mohammed, bin Mohammed. And maybe his wife would come forward with her testimony. Galat Bouflija has a square and a building that was designed for feet beating. So they suspend the person by the feet and start beating him. So there was a person, after 11 years, a person, you know, after 11 years, he succeeded from high school and continued education. He was suspended in the square. And he was beaten, black and blue, all over the body. You know, he was battered. And I'm sure that one of the reasons behind his death was this extreme battery. Another person, whose name I cannot remember. The Bouflija, Galat Bouflija is not equipped. We spent three days in Hanga. And we were setting up the tents. And then we started to bake bread on our own. And there were no toilets. There were some barrels that we designed as toilets. And we would take those barrels next to a well in order to empty those barrels. And then in the evening, we returned the barrels to be used as toilets. This is the first time I say such things. And on no occasion did I tell my students about that, not to have any impact on my students. But when they hear this today on TV, they will be shocked. On a day, one day, there was one of the students who was to be punished. They bring us to a gathering point next to the well, which is full with human waste. They would drop that person in that well. And then they take him out to walk around. And they would make him say that he was not a man. And if someone says, I'm a student, not a soldier, this is what will happen to them. But so many students insisted they were students. I would remember the enrolled student Mohammed, whom I remember so bitterly. Mohammed Al Ash was a student who was compelled to travel to Germany and until today, he cannot come back from Germany. He would come for a week, but then he goes back to Germany because he is suffering from lingering diseases and the Tunisian government cannot provide for his medicines. And the German government is providing him with medication and he is now still living in Germany. And I cannot talk about enforced enrollment in the military. We have... I cannot but talk about Professor Mokhtar Zakri, who died three or four days ago. Last Monday, on January 10, he was an enrolled student. There are about 600 who were released and they left 110 in the island of Zamra. And we remained. Some remained there until the school year ended. But myself and some of my colleagues, like Sami Ibrahim, we were released because we were declared inapt. I was taken to the military hospital of Habib Thamer and I have other appointments for checkups. So they told us that they would take us to the doctor. On the 9th of May, we discovered that from the island of Zamra, they took us, released us to go home. Remember, when I had my appointment for a checkup at Habib Thamer Hospital, I still felt dizzy and at night, I could not see. When I went for a medical checkup, they told me, "I'm no longer a military person." This is about enforced enrollment in the military. I lost that year and the second... The second year came. I said I would continue my education and forget about my ordeal. The second year came, the Gulf War and the American invasion of Iraq in January 1991 and the Al Amiriya martyrs, who died in that shelter. So we went on a demonstration. All of the schools and students were closed. I was expelled. We were taken out of the dormitories and I went to my native town. I took to the street with all of the people in a protest. Then I went back home to reassure my mother because the situation was very difficult. There were night assaults and night arrests and my late mother was someone so close to me and she was more than a mother to me because my mother never told me that this road is difficult, even though she was fully aware. She was confident about the way that I chose. She was convinced of my revolutionary sense, someone who cannot accept frustration and remain silent. So she was always supportive and she... And she has struggled with me. She had lived in suffering and she died frustrated. And I'll tell you why she died in frustration. There came the Gulf War and when I came back from the protest, I stayed up very late up to midnight with my mother telling her about my situation. I tried to prepare her psychologically, telling her that some folks were taken away from their homes in front of their children. As we were staying up, there was an assault on the house and they surrounded the house from all sides and the living room... They barged in the living room and my mother was scared. They took my passport and they used their bad language and my mother tried. She said, "My son has just come back from Nabl" and then she became convinced that these folks, whose faces were frightening faces, when she gave up, her son would be taken away from her at midnight, her son, whom she hasn't seen for months. She begged them to let go of me, so they started to push her away and thank God, I am the son of that mother. Do you imagine what she said? On the 16th of January 1991, at midnight, she started to make the scream of joy and she said, "My son is a man and there's nothing you can do about him or against him." I knew... She said, "There are men. I gave birth to a man and I went with them without any protest whatsoever." And this is what happened. So I was suspended from half past midnight up to the morning. I was suspended in the fashion that was previously described, bleeding from everywhere. All of my skin was open from beating and thank God, I never opened my mouth. I spent seven days. So they kept me for the time needed for the traces of torture to disappear. And then... But in the end, they left me, they released me and there were still traces of torture on my body. My mother was so happy to see me on the 23rd of January, when I went back home. And she was taking my clothes off and she was taking my clothes. She found that my back was with the scars of the whip. My leg was open. She embraced me and said, "You are a man and I am proud of you." Thank God, I went back to university in the month of May. The University of Tunis is no longer a place for study. They have been turned into camps of terror and killing. And I have to mention the 8th of May, that memorable day, when Ahmed Amri fell in the National School of Engineers, when Mahter Adnem Said fell in the square of the Faculty of Science in Tunis, when live ammunition was used everywhere. Then came the sign of war and all of the university activists, all of those who advocated freedom and liberty, became wanted and I entered a new period, the period of undercover activity, which is even worse and more dangerous than the period of prisons. We were groups operating at night. We had to stay awake at night for fear of being invaded and there is no possibility to go out. Once a week, there's someone who would bring food, but there's no way we go out. If someone goes out for necessity, then we have to spend the night in the mountain. I had an opportunity to go out to visit my mother. I went to visit her at the beginning of the summer of 91. When I entered the door, I felt someone saw me, but I kept going because I wanted to see my mother, whom I missed for not seeing during months. One hour later, there was the most violent invasion of the house. I was... It was... The house was raided. I was kidnapped. I became very experienced in dealing with those security officers, but still not enough to deal with that kind of invasion. There were so many officers with cameramen filming and the prosecutor and... And... They surrounded the entire neighborhood with the armed officers and there were so many cars that were surrounding the neighborhood. As they took me from my house to the vehicle, my mind went across all kinds of imagination and I said to myself that all of the students and the Islamists would be killed that night. When I reached the car, I found that I was alone. So I felt relieved and because of my experience with them, I became more comfortable and I asked them, "All of these forces for me, you could have been only two for my arrest, but I discovered that some have escaped and that they had weapons. That's why they came in such forces." They took one, whose name is Samir Arfaoui, and they started torturing me again. At the beginning, they said I would suspend him. Yeah, we suspend him and take off his clothes, but of course, I was first received with punches in the face and kicks. That thing I've become so accustomed to. I swear by Allah, the Almighty, and this is a reality that everybody should know. And I'm not going to boast about myself because I'm not asking for anything. They took me to the highest level of torture. They put the gun on my forehead and they would tell me, "I know you are one of the big leaders in Al-Kaf and you know that there are so many people killed and those people, I can just shoot you and issue a medical certificate certifying that you died of a heart attack." And I responded to him, "If I'm destined to die, then I shall die with pride, but I have nothing to tell you." Of course, torture ensued and because if it is an emergency situation, they took me to the tribunal, the Nabl Tribunal. The investigating judge, may God bless him, after three days of Hanga strike, I was so tired. I arrived on Friday, late in the afternoon. I told him, "I don't know, Your Honor, why I'm standing before you. I am the victim of injustice." He said, "All of your colleagues said the same thing." He said, "Come back on Monday and if you don't come back on Monday, we will find you." So he released me and I came back on Monday and as he was walking into and out of his office, he saw me standing there and he understood that I was the victim of injustice. He said he would release me, but I have to await trial. I found that the search warrants were issued and that I was in a state of escape. So I was so sick of hiding and then I moved from Al-Kaf to Bebsuqa in Tunis, in the Bebsuqa neighborhood. And a friend of mine said, "I have a solution for you." And this is for the anecdote. I had a mustache, so I shaved off my mustache and I changed my haircut and I wore glasses and jeans and all kinds of bracelets just to go out and breathe the air of liberty and freedom. And gradually, I started to work and do all kinds of job. I missed my mother again. I went back to Al-Kaf in the daylight and I was still wanted in that disguise. She was with the women. I just entered straight the house and until my mother joined me. And for the anecdote, my mother was so smart. When I left, she said, she told me, "Say hello to your mother and tell her, your Aunt Barca says hello", just to mislead the women who were staying with her. In 1991, 92, some of the students helped me and I left. I lost my first registration and I had a final opportunity to get registered in the university. So I got a university card and I took the... Had a transportation card that enables me to use the public transportation. And here, I want to tell the youth a piece of advice. When you fall, say that you stumbled, that you didn't fall. You have to pick up yourself and continue. I studied in the Faculty of Science and after two years of suffering in the desert and one year, you know, disappearing and hiding, when I went back to education, they were talking about square roots and some calculations. That year, I succeeded and I went to the second year of university. In the meantime, on some occasions, they would raid the house and they would harass my mother and she would tell them, "My son is in Libya, maybe he's abroad." So they would pay me a visit every now and then until the end of the university year 92 and 93, when I was supposed to get the certificate for the end of the undergraduate period. I could not get that diploma, but I was arrested and taken to prison and I started another, a new period, the period of imprisonment.
This is the first experience I witnessed in my life. I went through forced enrollment in the army, some other imprisonment, but this time, I was imprisoned in the 9th of April. So in fact, I just went through this passage of the year 2000 when I was in prison and they used to speak about the internet and computer science. I used to tell myself that, in fact, I missed civilization. But in the end, I said, "I missed nothing." In fact, in every prison, I was tortured and punished and also put in commissary detention. But I'd like to speak about the prison of Masadeen because I went through three different stages under three prison wardens. And in fact, during session, I just mentioned only two persons. I wanted really to disclose their names. So the director of the Technical School of Al-Kaf and the second prison warden of Masadeen and whom I didn't want to mention his name when he came to speak about democracy and freedom and telling us to speak about it. I told him that I was deprived of the holy book for one and a half years and then suddenly, after he was talking about freedom and democracy, as soon as I asked him about this book, he in fact caused many, many problems, many problems to me. So I was taken to the warden office and... So I was taken to the warden office and torture began. I can tell you that you are slapped, you are beaten. I mean, all prison officer used to beat you. But when a prison warden summoned you. And then he locked his office. And I see, I could see hatred in his eyes. And he started to beat me on all my, on all the parts of my body. And he started even to intimidate me and threaten me. I cannot forget that day. And I remember in the month of Ramadan, it was the month of January or February. So I was put in communique detention. And for 10 days. And then after 10 days, he just took me back to my own cell. And then repeats the same thing for the following 10 days. So in fact, many people have no idea about being in communique. Many, many people do not know anything about being in solitary confinement. So in fact, it's really terrible. Because sometimes, I mean, I do some exercise. So the officers come, they used to come and throw water, cold water on my body. So after Ramadan, so came the Eid. And it's the same thing. So I went on a hunger strike for the, for 10 days. I was supposed to leave prison on the day of the Eid. But the officer in charge of solitary confinement came. And sometimes they come with coffee and some cake. But I just, just simply told him that if I do not leave prison today, I would just hang myself and commit suicide. So the prison warden came and I left prison. I threatened them. Why I did this? Because I was sure that my mother was outside. So I met with my mother when I left prison. And I knew afterwards that she came many times. But she was deprived of visiting me. So she used to come to prison. And then they ordered her to go back home. And you know, from Tunis, she had to travel long distance to go to Sidi Bouzid or to Sfax and to endure all of this in order to visit me. You know that among the, I mean, when they punish me, they, in fact, they do not punish me. They also punish my father and my mother. And in fact, my brother was also dismissed from his job because they discovered that his brother was Farid. Clearly, my younger brother was also dismissed because they knew that his brother was clearly. And you know, sometimes to add to the suffering of the parents, they obliged the parents to, they allow parents one day for the visit and another day to bring food. So I just went through different prisons from the 9th of April. Prison and La Huarab. And I was put in solitary confinement in all these prisons in Sfax as well. I mean, on the 10th of December, I was in an office. And I was beaten. And I remember, in fact, in La Huarab, on the 10th of December, I was tortured by the prison warden. And behind him, on the wall, was the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. So from the prison of La Huarab, I was also welcomed in the best way. In the prison of Zramdin, they started to beat me. And with anything, they, they, so in fact, I went through a savage hunger strike. And in fact, my blood pressure was so low, it was about five. And without going into further details, after Sfax, I was imprisoned in Gabbes and then Sidi Bouzid and then Baja. I went through all these different prisons. So my mother, may God bless her soul. I mean, she comes to visit me in La Huarab. And in La Huarab, when a kind officer wanted to help her, so he looked at her identity card. And he found that she was from Al-Kaf. So he told her that I was in Al-Kaf. She goes back, she went back to Al-Kaf. She couldn't find me. And then she went to Baja. And in Baja, for two consecutive weeks, she kept looking for me. And she just threw all the food in the basket in front of the prison. Nobody really can imagine the feeling and the suffering of my mother. So after Baja, I was sent to Kasserine and then to Kerouan. And then from Kerouan, I left prison by the end of 1999. Let me just tell you an anecdote. So I speak about the national media, the national TV channel. Something about the national TV channel. So every Sunday, we used really to, just to do some hard work, including, I mean, the cleaning of our cells. There was a program presented by Hal Ruckbi every Sunday. When I was studying at the Faculty of Sciences and I was discovered. And then I was imprisoned. So the camera came and they just, in fact, made a TV program. I was a brilliant student and I used to sit in the front. By the way, tomorrow, I am having two exams and I hope I pass them. So there was this picture in the program with, I mean, my picture in. And then, when I was cleaning my cell in prison and my inmates were watching that TV program, they looked at me, in fact. So everybody shouted, "Fareed, Fareed, look at yourself" in the amphitheater at the Faculty of Sciences. So you can go back to this program in 1994 and you can see my picture in the classroom. So I left prison by the end of 1999. And my mother, may God bless her soul, was bitterly frustrated. And people also used to tell her that I destroyed myself. And I had really to convince my mother. And I used to promise my mother to get my certificate. And in fact, after I left prison, I just had some rest for about two weeks. And in December 1999, I started really to do everything in order to continue my studies. But I found myself to study during the day, but also work at night. I started just to give some tuition because I consider myself as a teacher of mathematics at the time. And my determination is to, in fact, to finish my studies and get my, and graduated. And in fact, I met with one of my former teachers. I spoke about my case. And she told me that my colleagues, in fact, were far ahead of me. But in fact, I spent four years. I used to be among the brightest students. I graduated in 2003. And I had, I was just a student. I had just graduated in June 2003. I just was writing my thesis. In June, I rented a flat. And in August, I got married. So it was a kind of suicide. Let me tell you why. I mean, the suffering I endured, the torture I suffered. And I can see it in the eyes of many. In fact, they tried really to destroy you. And they want really to make you sterile, in fact, incapable of, of. But thank God, I got married. And in fact, I found the woman who accepted me. I was, I mean, unemployed. I had no house equipment, no fridge, no TV. So I got married and thank God today. I mean, in fact, I have my children, Mohammed Khalil and Aya and Ahmed Yassin. And I'm sure they are now watching me. Just to see the suffering when I speak about prosecution. I mean, prosecution continues. And how can I really get married in this situation? I was obliged to get married with, in fact, in fact, when my mother, when my brother got married because he had the different authorization delivered by the municipality. So it was the only way to get married. And many of my colleagues, in fact, and my friends blamed me for not having invited them. But I told them that my brother got married, not me. And just because I didn't really want them to know about me. In fact, when I graduated, I did not expect from Benari's regime to offer me a job. I never. But my, in fact, message to you is to rely on yourself. Do not expect anything from the state or from anybody. I just, in fact, I'm an engineer in software applications. So my brother and sister, in fact, I mean, helped me a lot. And I just spent three months working on my research. And a German company came to Masadeen. I went to Masadeen to work. I, of course, got the permission from my mother and told her that I got a very good job with a German company. And I used to live here in Tunis. So my mother was shocked because when she hear the word Masadeen, I mean, all that came to her mind was my suffering. In fact, nobody can really tell her about how, about what I really endured in the prison of Masadeen. But I'm tolerant, but I cannot speak on behalf of my mother, in fact. So my mother suffered quite a lot. So she told me to go and work with this German company. So, and thank God, my supervisor was really happy and pleased with me. I, I mean, I work in a huge company with about 10,000 workers. And then I showed my competence in producing some application for human resources management and also in, I mean, some commercial application. Within two years, with my own team, we managed to produce a management system about the objective.
Objective-based convention. Objective-based convention.
Objective-based convention. And the CEO of this company told me that we were really a pioneer in this achievement. So in fact, why shouldn't I really happy with this invention? In fact, I did my best in order to obtain, to get my passport to go out and present my invention. And of course, the Truth and Dignity Commission had all the copies of, about all what I have told you from the beginning of my, of the problem I faced from the time I was in high school to the, to the problem I had when I was a university student. So all the documents are in my file. In fact, my achievement was presented by general manager on behalf of Germany because I couldn't go get my passport to travel to Germany. And the Ministry of Interior didn't give me my passport until after the revolution. So we cannot deny the, in fact, the advantages of the revolution. In fact, it's a blessing for us. So in fact, we have really to highlight what we gained from this revolution, the freedom of expression, of which we have been deprived for decades. I mean, I mean, you know, for about 60 years. So thank God, today we can just sit in. We can voice our opinion. We can ask for our rights. But in fact, today we are enjoying freedom, thank God. And also thank, thanks to our martyrs, Mr. Fareed. I know it's long. So could you please just conclude your story? So my God bless the soul of our martyr. So what are you studying now, professor? I was, in fact, dismissed three times in my life from school, university. But I didn't stumble in, in 2003, I graduated from university as an engineer specialized in commercial application. I also studied English. I had a diploma of fourth level in English. So I want really to fulfill all my goals. So after the revolution, okay. So we met a group of engineers and doctors. We went to the dean of the university of, to the Faculty of Law of Sousse. And in coordination with the Center of Democracy, not Islam and Democracy, it's another center in Sousse. So with the support of the Center, we just went through a training about basic model about laws. So in fact, we are still young and we can continue our studies. At the time, I was teaching at the School of Technology of Sousse. So, and we also studied with the. So, and we also studied with the ISP. It's a distant learning. So I just succeeded the first year, the second year. And we hope this year I'll get my BA. And then afterwards, I will start a master degree. Now, I'm a student in the third year at the Faculty of Law of Sousse. And of course, starting from Wednesday, I'm at the entire position of the Commission. And to be brief, I'd like to say, and I apologize if I have been long. So I studied law and I learned that a state which does not provide its citizen with the basic requirement for decent living, so it loses its legitimacy. So in fact, for any state, so it's a shame that in 2017, after the revolution and after the death of many citizens and also a nine-year-old girl dies of cold and anger. It's a shame. So I'm speaking about this. And I'm from the Kef, the city of mountains and snow. We know that people are dying because of the cold and the snow. Let me just tell the politician that if you are going to continue with your political partisanship and with all these conflict, we want to go far. We need really to work together hand in hand. And without this, we cannot achieve anything. The civil society as well and youth as well. I mean, let me tell you that you have to assume your responsibility. And we never, you can bring anything. You can give anything to your country. You have really to do it. I mean, you know, many of our youth are wasting their time. And many of them have become drug addict. So the state should assume its responsibility in order to help youth, to tell them that they belong to a whole state in order to find solution to all our problem. And by the way, speaking about problems and solution, I think there is no problem. I mean, our two enemies are poverty and ignorance. So how can we really combat poverty? It's with hard work. And we can combat ignorance by spreading knowledge. And I really apologize if I've been long.
We shall continue with the last testimony by Mrs. Salma bin Mohammed. And Abthiel Abdul Tif will present the testimony. We apologize for this late time for the testimony. Enrollment of youth and students was done by force. But many women were, enrollment was optional for some women. Salma bin Mohammed was the daughter of a freedom fighter who decided to get enrolled in the military to support her husband. She shared with him the suffering and the torture. And she was subject to all sorts of violations. She was deprived of public education. But she continued her education in private schools. She also, she was harassed as soon as she obtained a job. The traces of enforced enrollment were so hard on Tunisian families. We have today a sample of that experience with this testimony. We would like to pay tribute to the revolutions martyrs and wounded and for all of the wounded during the liberation movement of Tunisia. My name is Salwa bin Mohammed from Gbili Douz. I am the widow of the martyr Mohammed bin Mohammed. I got married to the late Mohammed at the age of 18. The first prosecutions started on the day of marriage. The marriage contract was refused and declined because I was wearing a veil. So we tried to get married in a different area in Djemna. And we concluded the marriage. But a week later, the mayor was dismissed. The same week, my late husband was moved from Gbili as he was a sergeant. And he was, he was moved to Gabes from Gbili. Therefore, I can see him every fortnight. And he joined the Tunisian army in 1977. He specialized in the area of military engineering. He graduated in class 22. And he obtained a degree number three of military engineering. He was dispatched to France in 1982, where he obtained a degree. Life was ordinary, but it was under the regime of Burghiba. There are few punishments. That is, transfer from one working area to another, from Douz to Gabes and then to Tunis and then to Bissou. These are the abusive transfers. In the meantime, as Brother Farid has previously said, he would take the baccalaureate examination. And therefore, he would apply for the military department to work in, under the military service and to take the exam. So he was given that opportunity. He passed the, the, passed the degree of General School of Education, which is called the baccalaureate in Tunisia. And then he was upgraded as a chief sergeant. And back then, he was on holiday in Douz. He was sent to Tunis. He was asked by the Minister of Defense. When he arrived in Tunis, he stayed for a week between the Ministry of the Interior and the Ministry of Defense. He was delivered by the Ministry of Defense to the Minister of the Interior for investigation. He was a little tortured. And the charge was treason and military court martial. And he was, his cousin was Rafiq bin Ali in the military. What was the charge? Belonging, I don't know exactly. He was very, he was very reserved. He was released. The details, I know that he was tortured for four days in the Ministry of the Interior. Then he was returned to the Ministry of the Defense. And he was, it was said that he was released for a bad conduct, for misconduct. And this was at the High School of Military Engineering in France. He would object categorically to wear the French uniform. He would wear only the Tunisian uniform. Despite that, he was accused of treason. And even in the military school in France, he would categorically reject and refuse to wear the French military uniform. He would only wear the Tunisian military uniform. How, how could he be enrolled even though he was a student? After being released from the military service, he wanted to continue his education. And as Farid said, he continued in the Naval School. And when there was, when enrollment came on the 20th of February, his name was on the list. There were some names wanted and there was some, some lists. My husband worked in the military for 13 years as sergeant. And he was starting to grow in the race of promotion. And he had, there were only ordinary situations. There were no emergencies. So for 12 years, he was a sergeant. And then he was taken to the military service. There was also, they would set up a place for torture. And he was being tortured in public as if there was a stage for torture for everyone to see. He was tortured in public. This was, this was an insult not to himself only, but also to the military institution. Lieutenant Tahimi, the late lieutenant was his boss in the military. After enrollment, some people would come and give me some news about him. There were some movements by Human Rights Watch that the case was submitted to President bin Ali, that there could be a scandal and that my late husband was a sergeant in the military. How could he be enrolled? So he was released after three months. It wasn't out of kindness, but because the former dictator was afraid for his reputation. Because he was a military man and because of the excessive torture, it became clear that he was physically impaired and mentally impaired. And so he was released after three months. After he returned, when I opened the door, I could see for myself that he was no longer a normal person. His way of looking, his way of talking, I knew he became a different person. He was no longer the man I used to know. And throughout the days, his body started to collapse day by day. His hands were getting paralyzed and likewise for his legs. And he would spend the whole day sleeping. He wouldn't make the difference between day and night. If you don't give him food, he doesn't eat. So he became unconscious of his surroundings. The only thing he was aware of, the only thing, were the prayers timings. So he wouldn't know me, he wouldn't know his children. But he was, the only thing he was aware of was the times for prayers. He would make the prayers. He would make the prayers in a timely fashion, lying on his back. Whenever he hears the prayers, a call for prayers, he would repeat that. He came to a stage where we thought that he should be hospitalized. We took him to the Douz Hospital, but the doctors there couldn't diagnose his disease. We took him to Gbili Hospital. And we took him to the hospital in, they referred him to the hospital of Sfax. So we took him to a private clinic. The doctor said that he was a supervisor in a public hospital. And we took him to a special ward in that hospital, public hospital, in the Habib Burghiba Hospital in Sfax. The first day when we saw him, they set up a table. And they started to investigate me as if I were in, under interrogation, whether he prays or doesn't pray. They would ask me about the deterioration of his health and the different stages of his health. It was like interrogation. Does he pray or not? Who were his friends? And we were in a hospital and I was surprised. And they presented themselves as doctors. They were wearing the white, they were doctors. They were working as doctors. I'm sure they were doctors because they were consulting with other patients. But when they saw me, they acted like, as if they were investigators. And I kind of felt that the, he was hospitalized in the fifth floor. He would not eat. He was sitting on his back. So I would feed him three times a day. I was the one who would feed him. So I take the lift to the fifth floor. Because, no, I have to go upstairs. I was deprived. I was denied the use of the lift because I was wearing the veil. And I would go upstairs, climb the stairs, the five floors. There was one of the relative of the friends of my husband who were, who, they showed me the right timings to come when the doctors are not there. And I would use the window on three occasions. So I jump from the window to feed my husband and then leave. All of the nurses and doctors knew me. The one of the nurses, on the first day, he said, this is my blouse. Because you are wearing the veil, I would call the police. You have to remove the veil and clean up my blouse. I said, I would not remove my veil. And I would defy him if he wants to bring the, to call the police officer. I can wash your blouse, no problem with that. So after four or five days, he would bring his blouse to be cleaned by me. And then he would bring four or five blouses of the other nurses to be cleaned by me. Early in the morning and in winter times, when the weather is so cold to feed my husband. And I use detergents. They asked me to use detergents and to rinse the clothes with my hand. And I pour the detergents. And the nurse would be standing there to watch me clean. I wasn't afraid of him. I could have broken the bottle of detergents on his head. But I would lose that privilege of feeding and... of feeding and cleaning my patient and sick husband. All of the other patients would have their beds and sheets changed. But my husband would be left unsupervised and I was the only one who would provide cleaning. And if I don't make it, he would be left unsupervised. So every day, I wear the blouses of the nurses and I just lay them to be exposed in the sun to get dried up. And I always get into the room through the window and leave the room out of the... through the window. And I was always under threat. And sometimes those in Habib Burghiba Hospital, they would say, "We know someone who sells tea, green tea, with mint tea in Beb Jible in an area." So I would go through the window and bring them mint tea. And I tell them, "This is not out of weakness or fear, but because I want to continue to service my husband." And we knew that he had a problem in his brain and he died after a short period of time. After, the second day after his death, they came to ask me for his identity card and passport. And I told them, "I didn't have any of that." "I had no documents." "I did not give them his documents." A week later, the Ministry of the Interior officers came to ask about my husband. There were the campaigns of 1991. My husband died in December 90. In 91, they started the big campaigns. They remembered my husband and they did not update their intelligence. They came after a week with the intention to arrest my husband because they did not update their intelligence. They did not know that he actually died. And then after his death, they started prosecuting me and persecuting me. I was only 20. My son was only two years and a month. My father said, "You should not stay alone." So I went to my father's house and I tried to go back to school. When I wanted to go back to school in the private school, I was denied registration in that school. And for two weeks, I went back and forth and I would take my father, maybe I would, out of respect, because my father was known, probably, they would expect. When they said, "No", I said, "I would sue them and file a case, that I would lodge a case against them." It wasn't this threat that made them change their mind, actually, in the end. But out of respect for my father Ahmed Sghair, so they accepted my registration. I have to go past the National Guard office and every other day, they subject me to some interrogation and they would ask me so many questions and they would pile up the papers and documents. I stand still. They would write that I am active in some unauthorized association and then they ask me to sign and then I leave. They would blame me for my way of clothing, the sandals I wear, my haircut, my way of... the clothes I wear. They would ask me to to take the needle out of the veil. So I take off the needle and put it on the desk. So I take off the needle. So I filled their desks with the needles that tie the veil to my hair. And then they... Then harassment came to school because of the veil I was wearing. And then came the circular 108 on the third day. As I returned to school, after three years of marriage, he died. And one year later, I returned after four years. And from the first quarter, I obtained diplomas and certificates. Then came the 108 circular and they started to... The headmaster and the school staff would stop at the entrance of the school and those who wear the veil would be denied access. Quite honestly, it wasn't a violent act. The headmaster was a teacher of mine and because I was the daughter... "Who was your father?" My father was Hamad Sghair, who was the leader of the Revolution of 44. He was one of the leaders of the Revolution of 44. He was sentenced to death and seven years of enforced labor, 20 years of enforced labor. And then he was... He got exiled, put in exile in Algeria and after... We thought that he died after independence. They found him in a prison cell in N'Adour and then he came back after the independence of Tunisia. He was a well-respected man, but he could not help all of the relatives. If he doesn't pay the power bill, electricity bill, he would be punished. They would tell him that his children are Islamists, that they are causing a lot of trouble. They would tell him to prevent us from going to the mosque. There was a minister who came after the campaign of 91. A minister came to Douz and they summoned him. They summoned Hamad Sghair, my father. "God bless his soul." "With some of the freedom fighters, you have served Tunisia and you have been freedom fighters. You have to be a model for the youth. As you know, the country is now sustaining some conspiracy of the Islamists. So because the youth trust you, we want you to give us intelligence and information about these youth." And one of the freedom fighters said, "As we said, they would serve them, but Hamad Sghair, my father, spat on them and said, 'We are men of honor and we would not do that for you.'" And then he fainted and he was affected by the word, the insult of being a snitch. And patriotism is not about the government. Now to go back to my story. Because I was causing a lot of trouble to the school, I gave up school. But I would not give up my veil either. I gave up school and I started to look for a job. I had a diploma in sewing. And there was a school for sewing. That was this... This coincided with the arrest of my brother. When they started investigating my... Interrogating my brother, they interrogated me and they forced the woman who had that sewing school to dismiss me. And they threatened to close her school. They would put pressure on the places where I go in order not to accept me. They wanted to summon me in the police district of Gbilly. I received the citation to appear. There was the Omda and the police officer. My brother was arrested and sentenced to a three-year prison sentence. So when they came to the house, my father stood to them and they said, "We had a summon for your daughter." And and he went to the Omda. He went to them, he said, "Aren't you ashamed of yourselves? You are bringing a summon to my daughter." My father died at the age of 89, but he was still standing. He has never used a cane until my brother was arrested. He has always stood firmly. During undercolonization and occupation, the entire family died. Only one. Six brothers died as martyrs. And he was still standing firmly, but he collapsed after the arrest of my brother. He blamed them for summoning me and the district police came to Douz and they interrogated me. They asked me a question about my other brother, the kind of study he had. I told him, "He was studying history, not Sharia or Islamic law." "No," I told them, "no, you were wrong." And they asked me, "What do you teach the people at school, of the sewing school?" I told, "I teach them embroidery and sewing at that school, but no religious classes at all." So I was persecuted everywhere and they tried to show a good image to the foreigners. There was a foreigner who started a project. He was married with a Tunisian woman. So I went to work with the foreigner. So they could not ask the foreigner or oblige him to dismiss me. They could not exert pressure on the Italian project owner. So I worked there until I decided to give up that job on my own. These are the landmarks of the period and the suffering I've been through. After the revolution, what are your feelings?
In Douz, people, of course, started to take to the streets and stage all these demonstrations. And the day Hatem Batahar and Ridhaoun were shot dead, I went out. In fact, I was in the square when the two martyrs were killed and after, Ben Ali fled the country. And I can tell you, for the first time in my life, I felt that Tunisia is mine. It's my property. I mean, and as if I were not walking on earth, I felt that as a country and as a population, I mean, we were tortured, we suffered a lot under the regime of Ben Ali. I mean, from the time I was young and I'm proud of belonging to another and I'm proud of belonging to the Islamist movement and I shall never deny that. And in fact, and of course, not only the Islamist struggled, there are also militant from different ideologies. But in fact, the revolution was there and I'm sure that what we had was a revolution. And if I go back to 1987 and how people were happy with the arrival of Ben Ali. But in fact, I mean, there was no revolution without blood. So my father told me since 1987 that there is no freedom without blood. No freedom without blood. Okay, the last message? So my father, who was a model, my model, just before, just a month before he died, we were sitting in our oasis and we used to work in the oasis. He was old, but he came to, just to be with us. A man came to say hello to him and he said, "After all what you went through, after you have done everything and you went through all this life." In fact, there is always... And my father died in the year 2000. But I'd like to say and I hope that militant from the right or from the left to... I think that what was or happened before 2011 in fact was a loss. And I hope that all the militant would say that... I'd like to tell them that they shouldn't feel disappointed, they shouldn't feel put off or desperate. And it is, in fact, a revolution and we made it. But you know, a revolution will not remain forever. A revolution is just some time. You rebelled against a particular situation and you, in order to change it, I'd like to tell you that in order to change the situation for the better, you should work. Salma, do you work? Well, I just produce programs to... For a TV channel. So thank you very much. So thank you very much, Salma, your testimony is so touching. And I'd like to tell everybody that we are having another appointment on the twenty-sixth of January and we